So we will call the special board meeting of the ISD 181 Board of Education to order, starting with roll call, please. Kelly.
Kevin Boils.
Here.
Michelle Brecken.
Here.
DJ Donneling.
Here.
Randy Heidman.
Here.
Sarah Spear.
Here.
John Warren.
Here.
Thank you, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so this meeting of the Brainerd School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.02. This meeting is being recorded, and access to the recording will be made available on the school desk at its website at some point in the near future. We'll move along to the approval of this agenda as presented.
So moved. I'll second.
So we have a motion from Director Spear and a second from Director Brecken. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Kelly.
Michelle Brecken?
Yes.
DJ Donneling?
Yes.
Randy Heidman?
Yes.
Sarah Spear?
Yes.
John Warren?
Yes.
Kevin Boils?
Yes. Great, thank you. Since this is a special school board meeting, there is no public input at this particular meeting. We'll have it again on the 13th at our regularly scheduled school board meeting. Next up, we have Barb, who's been gracious enough to join us virtually today to walk us through first, the review of the search timeline and process. Take it away, Barb.
Great, thank you very much. Nice to see everyone again. I appreciate the opportunity to join you to talk about next steps in the superintendent search process. There's going to be a couple of housekeeping items today, as well as some bigger items that we're going to be going through. So the first thing I wanted to touch on was the timeline, and I'm not going to review it in detail because I know that you have all seen this. It's also on the district website. Just want to remind all of your stakeholders, they can find it on the website. If you go to the Brainerd Public Schools website, in the upper right-hand corner of the homepage, you could click on Superintendent Search, and you'll find all of this information in there as well. So today's meeting is a special meeting. We're going to talk about the stakeholder report. That's going to be the first item I am going to cover. And then we're going to talk about the options for additional stakeholder involvement beyond the stakeholder report. We're also going to talk through interview training. It's very important that you're comfortable with the process and how it's going to unfold in both round one and round two. Want to answer any questions you have about the interview process as well. And then we're going to wrap up with those housekeeping items, as well as some proposed interview questions for you to use, at least in round one. So that's the overview of what I'd like to cover. I think the timeline, the real applicable dates are, yesterday at midnight was the deadline for applications, so April 21st at midnight. You did end up with nine applications in the pool, which for this time of year is quite good. And we have not had a chance to begin our vetting process yet. However, I know that you've received an email, or all of you should have received an email about Ravelis. That's the secure location up in the cloud, where you're going to be able to start looking at these tomorrow. So I would ask that you follow those instructions to get a username and a password created just for yourself. You're the only person that can use that. When you start looking at these applications, please remember they contain private data. So you must be very careful where you are viewing the applications. I just be real cognizant of the fact that if you are in public, or in your office, kitchen, table, coffee shop, anyone who walks behind you might glimpse a resume, or a cover letter, or something like that. So please be aware of the fact that you need to watch these when, or look at these when no one else could be watching what you're looking at on your screen. If there is anyone who would prefer to look at these in hard copy, just let me know, and I will work with the HR team in Brainerd Public Schools to make sure you have one set of hard copies available in the district office. You need to make an appointment to go in and review those with them. They have to stay there. When you leave, you can't take copies with you, or screenshots, or anything like that. But hard copies of the applications are an option for anyone who's not comfortable looking at everything up in the cloud. And then the next thing on the timeline that we'll be getting ready for is the meeting on April 30th at 1:00. That is the meeting where I'll be bringing to you our recommendations of who we feel best align with your leadership profile, and the stakeholder summary report, which we're going to be going over here in just a moment. At the conclusion of that meeting, depending upon what the board chooses to do, you do not have to take our recommendations. You've seen the applications yourself, so you may choose to interview folks we are not recommending, or choose not to interview folks that we're recommending. That'll be clearly up to the board. So that conclusion of that meeting is when those names go public, and everyone else's names that did apply to this position need to remain private forever. So please remember that again, board members, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in interview training. Those are really the highlights of the upcoming timeline and process. Are there any questions on that before I start with the biggest item on the agenda, which is the stakeholder report? All right.
Randy has questions.
Yeah, Barb, are we going to be talking today about questions? And this meeting is being recorded, correct?
Correct.
We're not going to be discussing specific questions, or questions in general? I mean, because, you know, if this is going to be placed on the board's website before we get involved with some of the interviews, et cetera, the folks will have an idea of what the questions are going to be. So what's the timeframe as far as making this recorded meeting public?
It will go public as soon as you typically might do. However, I'm glad you asked that. Thank you very much, because there are 36 questions that I've drafted that reflect your leadership profile and the stakeholder summary report. So Kelly has hard copies of those. I also emailed them to DJ. At the end of this meeting, I'm going to ask you each individually to go through and circle maybe two in each category that you as individuals prefer, and then I'm just going to do a quick tally. How many liked question one? How many liked question two? How many liked question three? And then when we're done, we'll see how many questions we've ended up with, and we can talk about the questions, but only from the perspective of what number are they? Because you're absolutely right, we don't want to have some candidates be more prepared than others, so we're going to try to keep questions under wraps and discuss them by number only, at least to the best of our ability.
Thanks, Barb.
Does that answer your question?
You betcha it does.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Nothing on this end, shoot.
Great. Well, interrupt me at any point, please. What's going to happen now when I start screen sharing is that I can't see any of you anymore. All I can see is my screen. So please don't feel like you're being rude if you want to shout out and say, "Hey, Barb, stop talking, I have a question for you." I'm not going to be able to see arms being raised. So the first thing I want to share is the stakeholder survey. So let's see here, we practiced this. I'm going to screen share a window. Stakeholder survey report. There we go. Can you see this? Yes or no? Great. And we practiced, this seems to be large enough for folks in the room to be able to see, and I'm going to be scrolling down throughout the entirety of this report here. So one thing you'll notice here is that it was open from the 3rd until the 14th, so it's only open 11 days. And during those 11 days, I want to congratulate and thank everyone in the district. You had 1,128 people complete the survey. That's phenomenal. For a district of your size, we would have expected to see about 730, 735. So the fact that you had over 1,100 people shows a tremendous amount of interest in this survey process. So thank you very much for that to anyone who filled this out. That's a terrific response. Here's an outline of the results. We asked folks to identify what hat they were wearing when they filled out this survey. And you'll see here that just over half, 52%, identified themselves as a parent or guardian, 18% as a community member, and almost 17% as a staff member. The rest were divided among business owners, agriculture, other, or student. And I sometimes get asked, who's in other? Well, people do identify in different ways. So sometimes it would be a grandparent, or a former staff member, or former board member and community member. Lots of different ways to identify something as sort of other than these other five categories. This is typically what we see. It is not unusual to see about half of the responses coming from parents and guardians in the community. And then the next largest categories are either community members or staff members. And the fact that they're very close to one another, almost 17% and 18%, is typical. So these are the percentages of people that did take this survey. Sometimes there was someone who filled it out twice because they had different lenses. And the most common one would be a staff member and a parent. So they were able to take it twice if they took it from different email addresses. And if they took it from their work email as a staff person, they may have answered the questions differently than when they got home and used a personal email address to take it instead. So occasionally, there's some overlap, but for the most part, people tend to take the survey only once. Here is the areas of expertise. These are the top six identified by the aggregate of your stakeholders. We do have these broken out by respondent category in a moment, but in terms of areas of expertise, these are the top six that rose to the top out of 17. So budget and finance by far was number one, curriculum development and evaluation, followed by collaborative leadership, then personnel management, school reform, which tends to be strategic planning or such, and then student testing results and achievement. So out of 17, these are the ones that did rise to the top. Now specialized skills, this is one that we have in another chart as well, because it's an apples-to-apples comparison with the chart, excuse me, the survey that the board members took before we created that leadership profile review. When you look at this list of specialized skills, what's really interesting to me is these six rose up for stakeholders out of 27. There were 27 choices, it's a lot. Superintendent's job is a lot, and so narrowing them down to top six can be difficult, but these are the ones that rose up for your stakeholders. Now interestingly enough, when you look at this list, and I compared it directly to the school board results, you are very much aligned with your stakeholders. For example, of these top six, four of them, the top four in fact, are in the school board's top 10. You identified those same ones. Acts with honesty and ethical manner, developing, directing, and effective leadership team, being visible and accessible, and serving as a people person and a good communicator. Those are in your top 10. Now, the experience in implementing educational priorities, which was in the top six for stakeholders, that wasn't in your top 10, however, you had some that were very, very close to that. You had ones that talked about curriculum, student achievement, student test scores, and also the school board's educational philosophy that reflects the community's priorities. So I think those three that are in the board's top 10 actually are, in many ways, the same or similar to what are considered educational priorities very often by stakeholders. The delegates of maintaining accountability was not in the top 10, but again, out of 27, it would have been extremely unusual to align with every single one. But this is good news, very good news for the district, that what the board based your leadership profile upon does reflect what your stakeholders told us as well.
Mr. Chair, Director, one question. Barb, what I did at the packet that I received earlier was I just went through and counted the number, both in the top six areas of expertise and the top six personal characteristics. I counted how many each of those categories showed up, no matter where they were, no matter if they were number one, or number six, or whatever. Does that have any impact on, you know, the number of times showed up versus where they were?
If you could clarify, what do you mean by the number of times they showed up versus where they were?
So, for example, budget and finance in the top six areas of expertise showed up six times within that whole graph.
Okay.
Collapsing leadership showed up five times.
You're talking about where it breaks down by type of person that answered, like on page three?
No, I'm just talking about the number of times it was recognized, or, you understand what I'm saying, Barb?
I do, I do. Thank you for asking. So on this list, this is, remember, this is in the aggregate. So 1,128 people, more of them said budget and finance, and most of them said that, and then they said curriculum. So it is in order of the entire respondent category. It's not broken out in this case, it's in totality.
Okay.
So yes, budget and finance was the most recognized by your stakeholders out of those 1,100 people. The second place one was curriculum development, the third place was collaborative leadership, et cetera.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. In terms of previous experience, this is also good news, in terms of, is previous superintendent experience important? Just over 60% said no. The school board, if you look right at the next one, 67% of you also said no. And so that is great to see that kind of alignment as well. And then obviously for yes, it was 39% versus 33%. So you are in touch with what your stakeholders thought as far as previous superintendent experience being important. Clearly, it is important, because we don't have 100% of the people saying no. However, it does align with what you told us when, as board members, the six of you took the same survey. Here's the outline on personal characteristics, and this is a little more difficult to measure because there are so many things that are important in terms of someone's character. But these are the things that, in the same way, rose to the top for those 1,100 people. They felt the most important in order were being honest and ethical, an effective communicator, problem solver, transparent, personable, and consistent. That was also very important to your stakeholders. Now, this is where it gets interesting, because we start to slice and dice the data by category. So tables on the following pages will summarize the quantitative data, the ones that said choose your top six. There are the numbers of responses. We did percentages earlier, but you can see here how many people, for instance, identified as parents or guardians, how many were community members, et cetera. So I'm going to go right into this, because this is where it gets really interesting. And I'm going to talk first about the areas of expertise. So you recognize these, and this is where budget and finance did bubble to the top overall, but when you look at the categories, there were some real clear trends. Budget and finance shows up in every single one of the different six stakeholder groups. So we're talking about the most, parents, heading down here to the smallest group, which was students. And yet, for all six of those categories, budget and finance is in there. Also, curriculum development and evaluation is also in there for all six. That's unusual, because very often, people with their life experiences see that list differently. There are 17 choices. So to have budget and finance and curriculum development across the board in each of these categories is quite unique. Then the rest, collaborative leadership, is in five of the six. School reform or strategic planning is also in five out of six. And personnel management is in five out of six. I have not seen personnel management rise to the top so clearly before and consistently across stakeholder groups. And then student testing and results and achievement, that was in three groups. It was in the parent group, it was in community group, and it was in the business owner group here. The other thing that's really interesting when you look at this is over here at the students. Now, it was the smallest sampling, there were 15 students that filled this out. They aligned with the other groups on these top three. And then the students identified diversity, equity, and inclusion, support services, and cultural competence. And that is extremely common in student groups, because even though the representative sample was fairly small, what we've seen, I think it's a generational difference, what we've seen with other student groups in other surveys, those three very commonly, regardless of if it's 15 or 1,500 students, those three feeling like you are supported and there are services available to you as a student, D E and I, and what that means to students, and cultural competence are almost always at the top six for your students as well. I'm going to go to personal characteristics, and again, I can't see you, so please do interrupt me. But here are the characteristics across the board, and there's similarities too. The top three, if you look over here at the largest group, parents and guardians, being honest, ethical, effective communicator, and problem solver are across the board in every single one of the six. That's, half of them are in all six. That's unusual as well. Transparent is in five of the six. Personable is in four. And consistent is in two. Consistency is important to the two largest groups, your parents and guardians, and your staff members. So a lot of people are looking for consistency here. Resourceful also had three. We don't see that word very often pop up out of 17 here again, but resourceful is in three. And then over here with the students, and they're mirroring what we see in other districts from the voices of the students. They're looking for a sense of humor, confident, and creative. So those are things that do rise up from the student perspective, regardless of what district they are in. All right, I'm going to keep going, but interrupt me if you need me to. Here's how it was broken out for previous experience. Now, you'll remember that it averaged to be about 60% overall, and in this case, you can see the previous experience is more important to staff members and people who identified as other than it is to other groups. And that's not surprising at all. Staff members see the day in and day out of a superintendent's work, and so having some experience tends to matter more to staff than it does to the rest of the groups. Parents and guardians, and the other, no, business, business owners and parents and guardians, between 65, 66% said no. And your students really truly believe it's not as necessary. But on average, you had just over 60% say no. Now here's when we really get into the apples and apples. All right, so out of 27, these are the top 10 that the board had identified. And these are the ones that, around which we then built that leadership profile that you did some wordsmithing on and came up with the vacancy brochure information. So when you look at these top 10, they are very close, in fact, to your stakeholder groups, which is good news for this search, it really is. Here we are again, right up at top, the honesty and ethics. And I know I've said before that that tends to be sort of the, well, duh, of course, they need to be honest and ethical. It still is something important to highlight and to raise, so candidates know it's something you're seeking. But that was important to all six groups. The visibility and accessibility, not as much. It rose up to the top because you had so many parents and guardians that think that that's important. Only two groups did identify that. It was the parents and guardians, and then over here, the group that identified as other. But otherwise, two groups promoted visibility and accessibility, but keep in mind that there were 27 choices. So a lot of consistency is unusual, and we never have 1,000%. And then the develops and directs an effective leadership team, you had five of the groups identify that. Everyone except for your students said leadership team capabilities and leadership is important. Four groups talked about human relations, communications, and being a people person, as well as four groups saying delegates authority while maintaining accountability. And four groups also said experience in implementing educational priorities. I think the educational priorities, again, is reflected in the board's choices. It's just, it gets to the heart of it, I think, when you're talking about, well, what are our priorities? And they're very often based on our community values, which was mentioned by the board, also the curriculum choices, which was selected and mentioned by the board, and then also the test scores and student achievement, which was mentioned by the board. Now, school finance is really important, and the board identified it as extremely important. It is here in three groups. It is in the staff member, the community member, and the business owner. So experience in school finance, and you talked about funding mechanisms, is important. It's not surprising that that shows up in these, but not necessarily in the top six for parents. It is in the top 10 for parents without question, but generally speaking, staff members will identify finance as a higher priority than parents, because it is part of the day-to-day reality that the school districts are facing. Also of interest, I think, in this knowledge of and experience with special education needs, was important to staff and over here to students. So being in the buildings every day, day in and day out, the students and the staff are identifying special ed as an area of prioritization for the next superintendent. And then also not surprising, I'd say, here, the promoting business and community involvement was most important in your community member group, as well as your business member group. So those two groups promoted, felt that was really important. And the last thing I'll point out is over in your students, there was some prioritization of people skills, mediation, collaboration, right here. The idea of accommodating and working with different perspectives and teamwork being important, and developing trust and working collaboratively with different groups, your students saw that as being important as well. So I won't spend any longer on this chart, I know the board has had time to look at it, but overall, when you look at what the board told us about a month ago, it aligns real closely with what we now have learned from your stakeholders, and that again, is very good news. That's it for the quantitative data, the things that we kind of crunched and collated for you. Are there any questions on quantitative, or can I move to the qualitative observations?
Any questions for Barb? We don't see any here. Barb, you're good to go.
Thank you. So then the second half of the survey was the open-ended questions, and that's the qualitative. I want to stress that it was really important to us that people knew that this survey was, one, anonymous, that there were no character limits, and so if they answered this in hard copy or on the computer, there were no limits to what they could tell us. And they also were not required to fill out every single answer in order to be heard. So notice here that 725, on average, people did answer at least one open-ended question, if not all four of them. That is also phenomenal. If we see more than half of the people who took the survey take the time to fill out the open-ended questions, that's really, really good. So I want to thank the people that took the extra time to identify what's important to them qualitatively. Here are the four questions, and all I'm going to do in this case is hit the themes, because you have seen this, I'm going to ask the board to place this on the website after tonight's meeting. But the first question is, what are some of the good things taking place in Brainerd Public Schools today? So I'm just going to read the highlights, the representative comments. You can imagine, if you have four comments and 1,100, no, 700 people, we have almost 3,000 comments, and we didn't want to give you all of those, because it'd be too difficult to sort through, but we do feel that the comments below these themes are representative of what people tended to say. So first of all, congrats on the great things. You're thriving due to a dedicated and highly praised staff that includes passionate, caring, and hardworking teachers and support personnel who are deeply committed to student success and quality of education. And over here on the right side, you can see how many related responses there were. So almost 250 people pointed to your staff and support personnel and teachers in your district. Don't get dizzy as I do this, because we're zoomed in kind of close, but a lot of wonderful comments about staff. The second theme that arose from the question about what's going on that's well there is that your schools are providing a diverse and enriching experience for your students, that there's a broad array of extracurricular activities, including strong sports programs, music and arts, and various clubs. All of those are aimed at fostering leadership, citizenship, and personal growth. 143 people mentioned that. And the third theme that arose in terms of what's going well in your district is that your stakeholders feel the school district excels by offering an impressively diverse and comprehensive curriculum, and your curriculum includes a wide range of electives, special education programs, career readiness paths, and opportunities for college credit, which are all designed to prepare students effectively for life beyond high school. Also a very good thing. And then, if I get past the comments in that regard, as we got into the second question, which was about challenges. What challenges do you see for a district over the next five years? The first one that was identified by nearly 200 people is that you will need to adapt your curriculum to meet modern educational standards and technological advancements. There's also some concern about how to address diverse student needs while maintaining a balance between teaching fundamental academic skills and equity and inclusion initiatives. This is not unusual. We see this as a challenge for a lot of districts in the state right now. So don't feel as though this is unique to Brainerd. We are seeing that difficult conversation around academic standings, test scores, curriculum, all of that, along with the social-emotional learning needs of all students in the district. Another challenge was, I'll get to it. There we go. People who responded to the survey did identify challenges related to financial management, including your budget constraints, managing overspending, and securing adequate funding to meet the district's evolving needs. So there's a lot of that, a lot of that concern out there. And knowing that you just completed a strategic planning process, I don't think the board is going to be surprised by any of the information that I'm sharing with you here. Another challenge is that you stakeholders feel you must manage the increasing behavioral and mental health issues among students. You need to ensure effective discipline and safety, and address concerns related to bullying and the influence of negative behaviors on the school environment. About 175 people pointed to that. Yet another challenge that your stakeholders saw is that they have some concern about your ongoing decline in student enrollment, which will continue, of course, to impact your school funding and your resources. And on this one, you'll note that we had 168 responses in this area, and honestly, 160 times they mentioned the word enrollment. So obviously, that is top of mind for your stakeholders. And there's another challenge, that your stakeholders feel the district needs to address issues relating to teacher burnout, staff turnout, and the struggle to attract and retain high-quality educators. You're also not alone in that regard. We're hearing a lot about recruiting and retaining staff across the state, as I'm sure that you are well aware. And then the last challenge that was identified through the survey is people feel the district will continue to face challenges related to ideological and political divisions within the community, with tensions rising over cultural values and the impact of political ideology on educational content and school policies. I'm sure that's also not a surprise to the school board. Bridging the trust gap. There's an acknowledgement of a divide in the community and a concern long-term that is going to affect the district. And then the third area that we asked about was what does the next superintendent need to know about the history of both the district and the community in order to succeed? And a few themes emerged here. About 150 people said that the next superintendent should know that while the district has a strong tradition of educational success and community pride, it also faces challenges in regards to socioeconomic inequality, the need for inclusivity and balancing growth while maintaining its small-town character. And then there was also in terms of what the person should know, that the next superintendent needs to be a deeply engaged and transparent leader who communicates effectively, actively listens to diverse community and staff opinions and is committed to making informed, tough decisions to foster trust among stakeholders and drive the school district forward. So there's quite a bit of mention of that. And then I believe this is the last area of what should they know in order to be successful? The next superintendent needs to understand the community's history of divided opinions on cultural and educational priorities, recognize the challenges in integrating diverse perspectives and navigate these complexities with a focus on inclusion and the fundamental educational needs of all students. That was the last thing that your stakeholders felt they should be aware of. And in the last area, we call it the bucket, which is tell us what else we need to know. Additional comments. In this case, almost 100 people chose to continue to answer this one. And there was one thing that began rose to the top that your stakeholders are looking for a superintendent who embodies their values and prioritizes education, transparency and long-term commitment, while also effectively managing and integrating diverse stakeholder opinions. And so that was the most common thing as far as what else should we know? The thing with long-term commitment, I want to address real quickly just to ensure, to remind people, the board knows this, but want to remind anyone watching this, that superintendent contracts in Minnesota by statute cannot be longer than three years. Very often they're one or two years, but three is the absolute max. And so it's difficult these days to ensure longevity with your superintendents, but it is possible. It is something though that was really important to your stakeholders when we asked for what else should you tell us? So if it's okay with the board, I'm going to stop screen sharing and answer any questions you may have on the transcript. Okay. Thank you for sitting through that rather long review, but I know you have this in front of you and it is also electronic there. So are there any questions I can answer for you in terms of the stakeholder's report?
Director Spear?
Just one quick question, Barb. This will be part of what's put out on the website, correct? So if people want to look at it, it'll be available.
That is, that is for the board to decide. I'm so glad you asked that, as we always recommend putting it on the website. However, we want the board to make that decision. We're not going to assume that for you.
So when do we do that?
When do you do that?
Yeah, do we do it now or is it a vote thing?
I would say it goes up by tomorrow at the latest. Do you have candidates that are interested in seeing it? And your stakeholders always want to ensure that their voices were heard. So I would recommend it goes up, if not tonight, tomorrow.
I think the question was deciding on whether to put it out there or not when we do the decision-making process.
Oh. So today and you, you can decide that now. Generally, it's a consensus. It doesn't necessarily have to be a formal motion. Most boards say, do we feel like we want it out there? And people say yes or no, but whatever formula you want to use in Brainerd is up to you.
Anybody object to having it out there? I can't imagine anybody on this board not wanting all of this stuff out there. But we open to different ideas, but no, I would say we have consensus.
I think we should do a mo- make a motion and have a vote on it. As a matter of fact, I'll move it. I'll move that we, I'll move that we publicize the stakeholder report on the website immediately after the meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, great. So we have a motion from Director Ward and a second from Director Brackett to, Reckon to formally approve posting the results of the stakeholder survey on the district website. Is there any other discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote, please, Karen.
CJ Dunklinger?
Yes.
Amy Heidman?
Yes.
Sarah Spear?
Yes.
John Moore?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Barb, continue.
Are there any questions on that report in general? Again, you had a tremendous participation rate and I want to thank everyone that took the time to do that. I always want to do sort of a temperature check of the board. I know that all of you hear from different constituencies and people have, have your ear, they have your email. Do you feel like the voices of the folks who contact you about school board issues are included in there? Or do you feel that we missed out on some realities of what's going on there in Brainerd Public Schools?
On my, Mr. Speaker, Director Ward. In my opinion, Barb, I think, I, in my own personal opinion, I think you hit the nail on the head. I think everything that our stakeholders said and the school board has said and all groups, all stakeholder groups is included in this report. And I think it's very, very valuable and worthwhile. Thank you.
Skip, Director Donnelly or anything else?
No, I think it's just that.
I think it's fine. I like to give them a chance to get in. It's kind of hard to jump in sometimes. I know you're a shy guy.
Well, let's make one thing clear. I'm not as pink as I look in this picture. I don't know what the deal is. I'm not that sunburned. I just want to set the record straight on that. And no, I think the survey did a great job. And I think it's cool that, that we had a high turnout on it and I think it's important. So no, I think it's just great.
From my own perspective, there were no surprises in it. I, I think it was, looked a lot like what we did two years ago. Looked a lot like what we heard through the strategic planning process. I think it exemplifies that. What I, what I like about the value of it is that it shows two, for lack of a better way to put it, kind of divergent views of different things that are, should be important to the district, kind of brought together in one report. And I think that's important because I think we have people of a certain persuasion philosophically in town. And we have people of another philosophical persuasion in town. And it's nice to see both reflected in here to show that it's, it's similar and equal. And it's not, you know, we tend to all think everybody thinks like we do, but they don't. And thank God, nobody thinks like I do. But I, I think it was neat to see that, that to see things like the small-town values and some of the, the core values that you would identify with this town coming forward. But also remembering that safety, inclusion, diversity, all of those things are still important too. So I kind of like seeing that reinforced through that. Feels like everybody's represented to me.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for those comments and for agreeing to put it on the website. I know that people will appreciate that. Transparency, if you remember from the top six, was really important to folks. So the more transparent you can be with the information, the better. So as a result, this is the point in the process where I say, okay, now that you've seen the stakeholder summary report, this is when I ask you about what would you like to do moving forward? And so I'm going to screen share something else as well, but the board should have a copy of it. In terms of what's next, and that was one of the questions. If you haven't had a chance to watch the Q and A session yet, please do, because one of the questions that was asked by a couple of different people was will stakeholders be involved in the interview process? And I know the last time you had a search, I believe there were interview committees that did interview candidates in addition to the school board interviewing them themselves. And we've learned a lot in the last couple of years, partly due to the pandemic and partly due to the use of technology, how that has shifted. So I do want to screen share the three options and then ask the board to make a decision tonight about the round one or round two interviews. So this will be the document that says three options, stakeholder survey, three options. Okay. I will zoom in on this as well, but just real briefly, you can see that it says one, two, three. So I believe the 200% is what people said was the best for them. Okay. So at this point, the fork in the road, you get to decide what you would like to do. And there's three options for including stakeholders in the finalist interviews. Option number one is to rely on that summary report that we just walked through to represent the stakeholder voices throughout the interview process. You are also going to be using this stakeholder summary report when you review applications. And we'll talk through tonight how to review applications because some of it is a lot of data. But have that next to you. We want you to have stakeholder summary report available when you are choosing the finalists, when you are deciding who to move on to round two and who ultimately to hire. So it's real important that that be done. I've already used this report to help craft my suggested interview questions for you. And I will do so again for round two, but that's your first option. The second option is to create interview committees. And these groups would interview the finalists separately on the same day, probably round two, as the school board. And then we'll need to find a way to coalesce their experience and someone will have to report it back to board members. Do you know how they felt about the interviews that they conducted with your finalists? It's really important, we never call them hiring committees, because you as the school board are the only hiring authority. And sometimes giving the impression that these groups do get to help you decide who to hire is unfair to them. The expectations are not accurate. You may end up hiring someone that they do not recommend. And you will have your reasons for perhaps doing so. But they, they will be very upset if they felt that they had a voice in the hiring and you moved on as the board and chose someone else. But you could do interview committees and we could talk more about who gets to be on those groups if you choose that option. And then the third option is to invite groups that represent stakeholders to send one person to watch the board interview. Obviously, these interviews are open to the public, so it could be a packed house. And yet there would be people identified within the group that watched the board interviews and then electronically provide feedback to the board through us. We have a form they could fill out on strengths and weaknesses of each of your finalists, whether it's two or three people. And then I would provide that to you prior to your deliberations. So those are the three options we see most commonly. And I was just going to say briefly, over the last three years, the most common has become the stakeholder summary report. If you feel it's thorough enough and represents stakeholder voices well enough, that's most common. We've had, at this point, now including the last two years, two or three boards have chosen to do external interview committees outside of the board. And the rest, probably about 20, 20 or 25 boards have chosen the third option, this audience input. But I'd say about 650 to 60 have chosen this one. That doesn't mean that's what you do in Brainerd. You need to do, do what is best for your district. It is different every time because every district's different. So I'm going to stop talking and I'm going to turn it back over to the chair to facilitate a conversation over what you might want to do with the interviews.
Okay, thanks Barb. A quick question on option three. We're not very familiar with that. When we, just for the board's edification, two years ago, we did number two, basically.
Okay.
We had the individual stakeholder groups, the candidate came in for a full day and went through the wringer. They started with student group, then they did teacher group, then they did an administrator group, then they met with business leaders, then they met with community leaders, then they had dinner with us and then they got to come interview with us. I think we all decided we weren't going to do that. So my question on number three, which seems like kind of an interesting tweener thing, is when one individual is sent to observe, what's the timeline from when they observe? Do they commiserate with their, the rest of their stakeholder group? Or are they wholly represented by that group and fill it out like real time?
Correct. The second, they are watching the interview groups and are seeing the interviews. They only have 15 minutes after each interview to type up one to three strengths and one to three weaknesses for that interview.
So it's based solely on that individual's perception, not on any, any ability to reconvene with the rest of their stakeholders? Okay, thank you. All right, discussion.
I have a question.
Michelle.
For you, Barb, I have a question. What, in your opinion, what is the rationale for most districts going with option number one?
I will share with you what I think, and this is just from observing the changes over the last five years. I think the interview committees have been a very traditional methodology of doing superintendent searches. And they are still done. And we're not the only search firm in Minnesota. And it's very possible other search firms require that step as a part of their process. The reason I think we've seen school boards edge away from that is because what I've heard boards say is this is our only employee and we were elected to make this decision. So I've heard board members say, I'm a member of the community, I'm a parent, whatever the, the relationship might be, I was elected to make this decision and I'm comfortable owning it. I feel like our stakeholders had a voice by sharing their thoughts. And it's a very accurate representation of their thoughts in the stakeholder summary report. And now I, as a board member, would like to take that authority and do with it what I think I was elected to do. That's just what I have heard the rationale from boards that have chosen to go that route. I think other boards have had bad experiences sometimes with giving over a lot of sense of ownership to stakeholders and then trying to wrest that back from stakeholders and make a decision as a board. It is particularly painful when the interview committees say, we interviewed these three people without question. John Doe is the strongest and then maybe Jane Doe and then Bob Doe. And for whatever reason, the board chooses to hire Bob Doe. That resentment lasts a very long time. And people tend to say, well, if you aren't going to listen to me, why did you make me give up four hours of my day to listen to these people? So there becomes some push-pull over what the expectations were of those interview committees. But with the right expectations set, it can work very well. If you've got guardrails up to ensure that people don't feel like it's their decision to tell the board what to do, but they're providing input that will help inform the board's decision and the board is clear that it's our decision, then it can work well. But I think some boards have seen it kind of run off the rails in previous searches that they've done. And they don't want to repeat that again because it was uncomfortable for a lot of people. Kind of a long answer, but that's just what I've observed, the board's deciding.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Sure. Barb, I'm wondering in that second scenario, when you have those interview committees, if the expectation is that they aren't actually discussing the candidates, that they're taking their own notes, you know, of the questions that they asked. And that's kind of the end of it. Nobody in the room knows where anybody else landed on their preferences. I know that's how we did it the last time around is nobody necessarily knew where, where any of the, the people in the room landed on their favorites or, or non-favorites. And I think that worked well because you weren't setting people up for failure, that they weren't going to get the candidate that the majority in the room wanted because nobody knew what the majority was.
Okay. So it was individual input to the board, it wasn't the collective, we as a group preferred this person or this person?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. If we were to go that route, I would recommend that because I think we would be setting ourselves up for, for failure if we were asking for the temperature in a room.
What does I understand it, like each stakeholder group had a number of representatives, right? That were allowed to come and do an evaluation, but they, everybody got a form. So there were student people in there, there were, you know, and then they would, or based on their interview with them, anybody could turn one in. So we got to pack it because they'd done it earlier in the day than when we would get here in the evening. So the only thing I would say that I didn't like about that process was I had to come back and interview the candidate with this dossier of all this information that was collected throughout the day. And now I'm just getting it at 6:30 or 8 o'clock at night and now I have to interview the candidate. So that would be the only, the only problem I had with it. I do, I do agree with you that it was kind of blind in the sense that it, people weren't comparing notes.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I think, I love that we did this stakeholder engagement survey and I wasn't completely sold on it, just knowing we, we felt like we knew what we knew. But I love how many people turned up for it. And it just kind of reinforces in my mind even that people want to be a part of this process. We want them to be bought in as much as we can include people, I think we should.
Other comments or questions for Barb? All right. Who is the school board? I don't know you people. All right, then I guess we're, we're at that fork where we've got to, we've got to decide on one of these three options. Is that correct?
Correct.
There's only one option?
Correct. I mean, we can nuance them, we're not locked into like, like Sarah was saying, we can, we can tweak and, and, you know, put some meat on the bones for one, one or more of these or, like I guess, you know, so.
What would be the downside to having? I'm just going to throw it out, one and three.
Well, we have one no matter what.
We've already, we've already done the, yeah. We've already done the stakeholder report.
Yeah, I mean, what we're really debating is to add option two or add option three or nothing.
Okay.
Right.
That's.
Option one, we already own it. It's already here. We paid for it. And like, I, I think to Sarah's point, it was a really, I also was not, I'll, you know, when you, when you guys brought it up last time, I was like, well, if you want to do it, fine. But now I'm glad we have it because it gives us some flexibility here. For me, it does.
Well, it showed how engaged the community was, I mean, with having that many respondents.
The thing I like about option two is that it gives that interview. The thing I like about option two is that it gives that interview committee a chance to meet that person, you know, on their own terms and within their own group and ask the questions rather than viewing us doing that. So they, they can see the nuance to the questions that are being asked. It just has a different feel to me of them getting to interview rather than them watching us interview. And I just like the idea of them being involved in the process because we ultimately need all of their buy-in, you know, to make this successful.
Mr. Chair. John. Barb, not the timeline makes a difference because we wanna make sure that we have the best person on board that we can have on board. So these different options, do they, do they, how do they align with timeline? And I'm not saying that we, we need to, I'm not saying we need to rush things, we've talked about that as a board as well. But I do know this, the longer, the longer it takes to make a decision, the pool of candidates become, in my opinion, become less quality. In my opinion. So tell me about timelines and the options.
Great, thank you. So it is currently April 22nd. Your second round of interviews is May 8th, so two weeks and two days. So the biggest challenge for districts that select either option two or option three, because whether it's interview committees or representative stakeholders watching your interviews, it's the same process in that you need to identify people who can speak for those groups. And so we'd need to do that this week in order to get folks lined up and organized and ready to roll. And then next week, I would ask for their help in terms of developing questions because we would want to help them craft those questions so they're not asking any questions that are illegal. We'll talk a little bit more about that when we go through the interview training packet. So who gets to participate, whether it's option two or three, is a decision you need to make tonight as well about maybe not, maybe not inviting people. You as a board shouldn't invite people, but you should identify the groups that do get to send someone to speak on their behalf. That gets most challenging when it is community members or parents, because that's a lot of people. And we don't want these interview groups larger than maybe twelve people. Even fifteen is really high. So when you think about the breadth and the depth of your stakeholders, can you find a few groups? Maybe each bargaining group sends one, you know, within the district is not as difficult. Do you want a student or two on there? How do you choose which parents get to participate? That can bog it down. So considering that we need this wrapped up with a nice bow on it within two weeks, doesn't mean we have to start right away tomorrow. But you would need to decide tonight which groups get to be invited to send someone. And then that person needs to contact someone within the district that keeps track of all of this and gets the email addresses so that I can then reach out to them next week with next steps about either crafting interview questions for that day. I'm assuming we're gonna do these round two if you do them, or how to use that strengths and weaknesses form if they're doing it as far as option three. So that's a timeline consideration. It is a little bit tighter. We don't have a month to prepare for this. We have a week, week and a half to get stakeholders lined up to help interview these folks in the second round.
Mr. Chair, let me ask, let me ask it differently, Barb. Let me ask it differently. Can, no matter what option we pick, are we still on the timeline that you have laid out tonight, that we as a board have okayed over the whole process here and that you laid out tonight? No matter what option?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes. I apologize if I didn't quite gather that. I would not recommend you put your interviews out beyond March, May 8th, sorry, May 8th to make your decision. Correct.
Director Boiles, I have another question. Barb, I'm, I'm wondering, if we were to choose to do options one, is there, is there a way to get feedback from people who have some strong feelings if they're watching the interviews and not have it be so formalized as two or three?
Yes, yes. So, so an example of that would be, anyone who's watching the interviews could have access to what we call the EMD form, which is what board members are going to use. So for every question, you as board members individually will decide if that exceeded your expectations, met them, or if you were disappointed. EMD, exceeds meets disappoints. You could make a link to that evaluation tool available to anyone who's watching the interviews that day. The challenge would be those guardrails. We have seen that tool not used in terms of its, it was well-intended, in that we trusted people to fill it out, listen to the answers, evaluate people truly on what they said. Did it really exceed my expectations or was I just disappointed? That's the way it's intended to be used. When it doesn't work is when people try to promote or blackball a candidate because they don't like them or they really like them. And so the results become skewed because someone puts in nothing but D's. I'm disappointed in every answer, I don't care what they said. So that candidate, it appears, one person or two people actually could probably tank their candidacy by giving them nothing but the worst marks. Similarly, if they really like someone, they give them nothing but E's, even if the answers weren't that good.
Don't you think that people would just email us anyways when they email us or call us? I mean, they're gonna watch if they're concerned about these interviews, why wouldn't they just send us an email? Don't you think that's gonna happen? I mean, Kevin and Sarah have been through this before, I mean, did that happen last time or how'd it work?
To some extent.
Oh, I got lots of phone calls. Yeah, yep, and, and some emails, yep, for sure. Last time was a little unique because we had kind of a nuance to the situation where we had a last-minute accusation leveled against one of the finalists that kind of muddied the waters even more. Kind of, it's one of the scenarios that's outlined in one of Barb's exercises that she has here. So it, it, there was definitely, what Barb was talking about on both sides of the equation, there were definitely people that were pro one finalist and pro the other finalist, definitely lobbying. And, I mean, we get lobbied on everything by our constituents, which is our job to listen to that. So, yeah, I mean, we got plenty of, I did, I got lots of calls. And not just when we were at the finalist stage either, as, as we were doing the, we did six interviews, the first round. We interviewed six candidates and I started hearing from people right away on the sixth, even though we kind of decided right after that.
Barb, I talked to you, I don't know, a week or two ago, and I think you told me that of the last fifty-four of these searches that you guys have done, only three schools picked something other than number one, is that right?
Two or three schools, yeah. We did fifty-five searches the last two years. We've added another twenty-four this year, so I'm trying to keep up with it. But of the fifty-five, two districts had interview committees, and about fourteen had stakeholder groups watching the board interviews on, and then saying strengths and weaknesses. And then, whatever the difference is, thirty-five maybe said the stakeholder report was sufficient for them to base their decisions upon when they saw the interviews, for the board to make their decision upon. Correct.
I feel comfortable with number one. I think we spent the money for the stakeholder input, and the other two don't make any sense to me. In the world that I live in and, you know, of hiring and leadership and trying to find people to run things, I can't imagine having these things. We gotta, we got elected. I, I kind of feel like it's our responsibility to get this done and make sure we do the best job we can.
Sarah. I dispensed with director for the special meeting, by the way.
I, I don't disagree with that. I feel like this is our job and I think we should use every tool that we have. And I think one of those tools is feedback from the folks that have to work under this leadership every day. I would never go into an interview and hire someone for a leadership position without having someone that is going to work for them in the room to get their feedback, because I know it's not gonna work. It's, you're at, you're now making a decision for somebody that they had no input on, and it's an uphill climb to get that buy-in. I, if it's, I mean, if all things are equal, I don't know that this hurts to invite feedback. And I, I love the idea, if our community and our stakeholders are engaged, why wouldn't we honor that and invite them into the conversation? I do, I do firmly believe this is our decision, and this is our only one, you know, person that we employ, but I'm not arrogant enough to think that I'm qualified in evaluating curriculum and all of these things that we're asking this person to be good at. I'd love to have the eyeballs of people in the room giving feedback on some of those things that we're not gonna see.
I'll get to you in a second, John. What I would say, is anybody pro three?
Yes.
Okay, so you're pro three, so go ahead, because I wanna hear the case for number three.
I was just gonna say that, thank you for asking that, because I think number three aligns with both concerns, with both, I understand what DJ is saying, I understand what Sarah's saying, and I think number three does it, takes care of it for, and Randy was the one that said, let's look at one and three together. I just think number three absolutely takes the stakeholder into survey, into, into effect, into consideration, but it also allows for input from other groups. The way I read it anyhow. And I think that, I agree, Sarah, that input from other groups is valuable and important. But in my opinion, number three is the one that I believe would best suit both, both questions, both concerns or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
So who picks who the stakeholders are, John?
Oh, that's
So we got five hundred and eighty parents that filled this out, so who gets to pick which parent gets to be the one?
Yeah.
We gonna flip a coin, we gonna play a straw game, what are we gonna do? I don't understand it. Like, who picks them? We're not supposed to advise them. So who picks out the people? We don't know who we're giving. I don't know, I don't know of any other industry other than, and I'm not that familiar with government, that would ever even consider this. Would we ask the fans to pick out the new head coach for the Vikings? Because the fans are a big part, they buy all the tickets.
I wish.
But you know what I mean? It's like, I don't know what, what, what business, I just don't, it just makes no sense to me. Now, if you had someone that was an expert like Barb to take their advice or the School Board Association, I understand that because I do this all the time. I don't mind getting an outside set of eyes on things, but I don't know who these people are going to be. And I don't think it's very prudent in the positions that we're in.
Director
Personally.
Donald Linger.
Go ahead.
Okay. You know, I think, to Barb's point, these people self-select. We don't, I don't think we pick them. I think the, the bargaining units pick their folks, students can self-select.
What bargaining units? What are, yes, there you go.
And
That's, that's what I'm talking about, bargaining units. What's a bargaining unit, Sarah? Explain to me, because I'm just a
So like the certified group, you know, the educational assistants, all of, they, we have a number of different bargaining units that report into this structure and work under this leadership.
Well, should we have like an accounting group? Should we try to get some CPAs from town that maybe have some ideas on this finance side of things?
I'm not
I don't understand.
I'm not opposed to, for example, if we wanted to reach out to the chamber and ask them, you know, would you nominate two people or invite two people to be part of this? Just so we've got representation, you know, maybe it's two parents from the district advisory committee, which is our parent group, and two people from the business, two people from, you know, each bargaining group, whatever that looks like, or maybe it's one. That probably gets to be too many people.
DJ, go ahead, John. DJ, I understand what you're saying too, you know, with who decides who? Who decides who and who decides what, quite frankly? In my, in, what I was thinking is, we have the six, we have six categories here. Those are the categories. Those are the categories of the representative, parent guardian, community member, staff member, business owner, agriculture, student. And I, the other, to me, I would, I would suggest that we put clergy, clergy. That, that would just be my recommendation. And that kind of encompasses the whole field of, of possible people that I think are, you know, represented as community. So I think the six groups are here, now to select, to select the one, and I would agree, Sarah, that I think two from each group is too much, to select the one, who does that? That's, that's a million dollar question, in my opinion. But, so that's what I would suggest.
My question would be, would that one person represent that whole stakeholder group?
Probably not.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And so I think, I, if, if we were to go with number one, I don't want the optic to be that we are not, that we don't care about what the stakeholders want. But it just feels so heavy to do two or three to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think DJ and I, we are agreeing on something.
Man.
Barb
Walker's got something Barb knows.
Barb wants to talk.
Barb started.
Well, if I may, I'm gonna screen share one more thing because this conversation does come up. It's like, well, we want to do two or we want to do three. Then it's like, okay, who chooses those folks? I'm gonna screen share something that might help the conversation. I don't know if it'll bring clarity or if it will not bring clarity. It, it is a decision that you want to be as inclusive as possible, and sometimes if you don't include the right people, then you're excluding others and people don't like that either. So here's some options. Oh, that's not it. That's what I just did, sorry.
You wanna be on the group?
No.
No.
No. All right, here we go. This is, I believe, what I want to do. There we go. So I'm gonna zoom in on this so you can read it. But this is what we put together for the audience input, which is the strengths and weaknesses live form. So for example, we'll go to two hundred. What we would say is you want to consider those groups you would typically reach out to to support an operating level or a referendum. Also, any subgroups of your community, parents, staff and students. Some people are in more than one box. A better choice is to request that they select someone from their membership themselves than inviting the leadership only. And bargaining units should be represented. So here is a possible list of who you could invite to send someone. So for instance, you could have one principal, four teachers with the different age groups. So one for high school, one for elementary, one for middle, one for early childhood, someone from administration, possibly the executive assistant, and then people from these groups. Now, these also depend upon your bargaining units and how you do have those structured up. Parents, students, whether you have them on the board or not, but maybe student representative, district partnerships, business, higher education, there's a chamber of commerce. You also might have foundations, donors or funders in the community. Any grassroots organization is also really important. The challenge with this is that we would say an ideal group is seven to ten people. And more than fifteen, it starts to become just cumbersome, very cumbersome. And there is an occasional challenge where someone says, well, why is she speaking for me? I don't agree with her, or I don't agree with him, why would she do it? So you just, you need to navigate this because it can be very successful. It can also create some hurt feelings and some frustration. So I could just leave this up for a moment and turn it back over to the chair to facilitate the additional conversation around what would you want to do? I hope this helps, and if it doesn't, I'll just stop screen sharing.
Randy, you're up.
I'll just go on the record to say that I am not at all in favor of option number two, creating an interview committee. I kind of fall employees, I'm gonna choose their executive officer. I just, I just don't believe that that is something that is going to be well-received. We were elected, we all ran on certain things, and if people wanna reelect us the next time, they reelect us. If not, so be it. But I just, I just don't believe in these committees and, you know, how are they gonna be set up, who's gonna choose them? I just, I mean, what, did you guys do this last time?
Mm-hmm, you did.
Yeah, how'd that work?
Well, and actually, to give a little more context, so here, we're walking into a community in a district that the last time we did this, two years ago, everyone had access, anyone could come and interview the superintendent candidates. To then lock down and say the only one that has access or input is this board, is not going to be well-received. I don't wanna be a part of how that's going to be received. So I, I think there's some middle ground here in how we get there, but to go from that two years ago, that very accessible, you know, let's take input, they're not hiring and they're not deciding. and they're not deciding, but they got to give input on how they felt, which meant they were heard. And, you know, we, we read over what they, they shared with us. Not that that's how we voted, or that that's what we did, but I think it's important, and they're telling us they're invested in this by how they responded to, you know, that last, um, go around of survey, that I don't, I don't want to lock them out of the process.
What about a process where, when, I mean, so let's say we get to somewhere between four and six semifinalists slash finalists, depending on the statute? Right? They come in, the, the, last time we did those interviews virtually. Um, the first round of interviews were virtual. I, I don't remember, are we doing those virtual, or are we bringing all of our semifinalists in?
Bringing them in, in person.
So, you know, I think there is some middle ground there. I think if you had some sort of evaluation process that wants that first round of interviews where people, anybody that wants to could score any of the semifinalists that we do, um, I, I feel like that's the middle ground. Now, I will say this, if I'm going to use DJ's football team analogy, I mean, I agree to an extent, but I also agree that when you're bringing in a head coach candidate, you know, let's say of the Vikings, Justin Jefferson's going to be in that room. Um, they're going to be in there, they may not have any say about it, the owner is going to decide who they do, but, you know, key players sometimes are in the room. Aaron Rodgers demands to be in the room, because he's Aaron Rodgers and we all hate him. Um, but anyway, I digress. Where I'm at on this is, I think what we should do first is straw poll where all six of us are, one, two, or three, and then I think, from there, we can eliminate things and then we can tighten the discussion. Does that make sense?
It, it does make sense. I guess, um, I, I agree, Sarah. I don't want to deny anybody to have input in this process. I'm just wondering if there's a cleaner, easier way to do that, rather than setting up all these interview committees and, and having other people speak for their stakeholder group and when they might not be speaking for each of those people. So is there a way to have people, and Barb, but kind of address that evaluation summary or that, um, document where somebody could, if they had strong feelings, they could make that known to us, and we can review that, rather than having, you know, a variety of, 15 people trying to give you, trying to speak for everybody else?
Have you ever had a district that's done something like that, that kind of hybrided, Barb?
Yes, and you can create something that works for Brainard. Um, there's also a difference between input and interaction. So an option for you to consider is, you know, input, these are input. You keep the stakeholder summary next to you, and you look at that when you're making your decisions, or there's interview committees that have a, a way of getting you feedback, or people providing input on strengths and weaknesses of your interview. So those are input. Interaction could mean that the candidates come earlier in the day on May 8th, and they should get a district tour, and I'll talk to your staff about that, about getting a tour around the district, but you also could set up a very informal meet and greet with the candidates throughout the day on May 8th. You could set up, I call it open mic night. It's really risky to do that and have people ask the candidates any question that they want to ask, but you could do sort of open mic night, or open mic lunch, or something like that, and people could ask them anything. Sometimes if they want to do that, we would moderate that and take the questions in advance on cards to make sure that none of the questions are illegal again. Um, but that's interaction. The interaction with stakeholders is sometimes enough for some communities to feel involved versus the input is when people get to actually share their thoughts with the board. And you could also make it that a hybrid much larger, going back to that EMD form, you could have people fill it out on a five-point scale, how much did you like this candidate overall, instead of each question EMD. The only challenge I would caution you to remember is that people will stuff the ballot box for and against people, and you have to be careful as board members to rise above any of the information that may have the integrity, the information is challenged, because there might have been a, um, collaborated or a coordinated effort to stuff the box for or against some of your finalists. I've seen that happen in the interest of being inclusive. So I just want the board to be cautioned that if you don't have parameters around input, it does run the risk of being skewed. So you could do whatever fits. We'll make sure we make it work if you want it in Brainard, but there's definitely opportunities and pitfalls to all of these choices. So the ripples, just want to make sure you know about what those might be.
Thanks, Barb. Okay, I'm going to do a straw poll. One, two, or three. DJ?
One.
Michelle?
Um, three.
John?
One.
Randy?
One.
Sarah?
Is there such thing as a 2A?
There's such thing as more dialogue.
Because I like what Barb proposed.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's more dialogue to come. I'm just trying to eliminate an option if we can.
I mean, great. Um, I will go with three then.
And I'm a one. But I'm open to some discussion about how to gather some additional information, but I, I, again, like I said, while I feel that the committees and having those stakeholders interview the candidates, here are my two issues with it. Number one, I did not have time to review all of that information, not as effectively as I could have. Subset underneath that. Number two, two principals found me the night we came back to interview the final candidate and let me know their, their feelings about it regardless, anyway. So I think people do have access to us to tell us what they think about things. Number three, I am worried about what Barb's talking about, where people, um, when there's a data point that they can leverage, will use it to stuff the ballot box. So I have those concerns. Um, it's not about trying to not include stakeholder groups. And then I would say underneath that, I also have the concern that, that DJ espoused as well, which is, when you get to some of these groups, how do you choose who's who? Um, I realize some of them will self-delect, uh, self-select and nominate their own person to bring forward, that nobody is picking them out of a hat necessarily, but, you know, I, I think it creates some interesting situations. So I think if we had a way to cre, to collect evaluatory data earlier in the process, is my thought, before we've honed in on finalists, because people don't, you know, maybe that's the way to go, I don't know. Maybe it doesn't make sense. Go ahead, John.
Well, I'm going to explain why I went from three to one. Because I, I agree with Sarah that we, you know, we have to have feedback, but then I, as Barb put up that list, you know, with 14 different groups and, you know, whomever, whatever, I'm going, I'm thinking to myself, um, that's not going to work. I mean, I just, that's my own opinion, that's my own opinion, and, and I am also concerned about, um, the, the ballot box being stuffed, eat, no matter which side, which way, or whatever. Um, I read every comment in that survey, every comment. I've read all of the stuff that we've been sent. And I think that's great input. I think the, and, and just from the survey, when, when we read the comments in the survey, there's a, there's a significant split in this community. I don't know how you bring together that whole community to try to find somebody that's going to appease every person in this district. You're not. You are not. No matter what we decide, board members, there, there's going to be somebody that's not going to be happy with us, and I get that, too. And if they don't want to reelect us, that's fine, too. I, we, we've all been there, okay? But DJ's point about, um, you know, we, we've been elected to make a tough decision here, to do a tough deed, and a, and a good deed, and a good deed, and, and try to find the best, and trying to bring the whole, the whole community together. Um, that survey to me was just, it was remarkable, Barb, and you guys did a great job, and it really gave a great example of what we are facing here as a board. And I think that we have, as a board, have the responsibility to listen, and we have, and we did, and, um, I don't know that going outward more and trying to listen more is going to help anything. That's, that's my opinion. I mean, so I'm swaying more to, let's get it done, Barb. Let's get it done, and do the best job we can. And, and I, we will, you, all of us will, I know that. I'm not questioning it that all. I, I, again, I just think there's been a lot of feedback given already, and it's, and it's been remarkable, and I, I applaud our community, that 1,128 people that filled that survey in, and that's remarkable. And I think it's a very, very good, um, example of the Brainard School District, that survey is, in my opinion.
Well, and it was one thing we didn't do last time. We didn't do a survey like this last time. So since then, we've got the strategic planning data that we have, and then we have this. And in this, every staff member had an opportunity to fill this out, so in my mind, the, the staff macro priorities are sort of already pre-identified, if we're talking about staff. The community is a little more nebulous and hard to kind of get your arms around. And then if I'm a candidate, if I'm being honest, those candidates, by the time we got them in those evenings, they'd had a long, long, long day. I mean, they're doing these town halls with all these different groups, and that's the interaction stuff, and I don't know that we were seeing any of those people at their best, because they've been running since seven o'clock this, that morning, and we had them here until eight thirty, nine o'clock that night. So it's, it's another piece to keep in mind. I mean, I, I'm all for engagement and participation, don't get me wrong, but I think we've allowed for that, and in the end, it's our decision anyway. That's kind of where I'm at with it. Randy?
Well, and going back, I mean, I can understand why there may be some board members that want to maybe have a little bit more input, and I, I get it. And I go back to what John said, we've, we've already identified groups of people in this survey. Uh, to be honest with you, I wouldn't have a problem with, uh, a hybrid, uh, number three, and let, let the group choose who they want to send. I mean, that's, that's between them, that's, you know, all, all we're looking for is maybe some additional input. I could care less what parent or guardian comes, although how are you, how are we going to identify all the parents and the guardians? That, that would be the problem there. But, uh, with these groups of people, I mean, I, I, I know, uh, well, I, I know of, I would like to think, yeah, probably two or three groups would probably pick a pretty good representative. Uh, so I wouldn't be opposed to that additional input, not to slow the process down, but for additional input. And, uh, it, and if it doesn't come to that bearing, I mean, I'm totally, totally satisfied with number.
Randy, Randy.
Number one.
Randy, did you look at the list that Barb put up? Did you see that list that Barb put up? Did you look at it?
Um, what I'm referring to, DJ, is.
There's like sixteen, there's like sixteen, sixteen things on there, and it's like thirteen of them work at the school.
No, no, no.
This isn't a representation.
DJ, I'm not talking about the list.
But the survey is. Well, what groups are you talking about?
Talking about the six groups that.
This is what her suggestion is for three.
I understand.
This is her suggestion for.
I understand, but, but John brought up an interesting point. We've already done a survey, and we have six groups of people.
Right. Well, we have six characteristics. Oh, yeah, we have six groups of people, right? We have other.
So there, there'd be, you know, if you had one from each group, you have six people giving us additional input. I mean.
I think what.
I can be swayed to that. I mean, I'm not saying I'm, you know, I'm, I'm number one, solid.
This, this, um, stakeholder's report is valuable information, valuable information. It doesn't address the specific candidates, though. It, it, it just addresses generally what our community is looking for. I, if somehow we could communicate, if anybody who's watching these interviews has any feelings, strong feelings either way, feel free to reach out to either any one of us if you want to provide some feedback.
Yeah, and I think that channel is always there.
And they will.
And I don't want to undermine what you said. Um, but what I would say is, you know, Barb went through these and showed us that, you know, six out of six groups picked certain things.
Right.
So to me, my takeaway is, I'm, I'm an elected individual with some working knowledge of how a superintendent's job is done, right? By being a school board member, I have a little more information than a lot of people, a little less than some people. So for me to go acts with honesty and ethical manner, I don't need a committee group of people from the community to tell me if that person appears ethical or not. It, I mean, I'm going to make my own judgment on that. They've already told me what's important to them, now I've got to watch for that characteristic. That's kind of how, the filter, that I, that's what allows me to get to number one.
I'm wondering, you know, if we're hung up on the input part, if it's just an opportunity, and Barb, you had mentioned this, like, a meet and greet, that they get to come and shake hands with candidates, and I would propose just the three finalists, I wouldn't say, you know, the, the whole group, for sure.
I like that idea.
That they have access to them and get to make, you know, have, have an impression of some.
We did do the open mic thing last time, too.
We did.
And it, and it never, it never went poorly.
It was good.
But that was two years ago, it was a different world.
Yeah. But I'd, I'd, I'd love for people to have access, at least, to the candidates.
So just to, um, make a couple of points. That just went, can you still see me? I see colored bars.
Yep.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so, a couple of key points. Um, I think this is great, this is a really healthy conversation, and, and do keep in mind that the difference between input and interaction exists. We were talking about input to the board. Maybe you don't need the input, maybe you want to provide opportunities for interaction, and that we can design any way that you want. Also, remember that you as board members, once you are in Rebellis and you see these application materials, you're going to see about this much more information than your stakeholders would see in a one-hour interview. So your data points will be far greater than any stakeholders who are watching these interviews. You're going to see resumes, transcripts, licenses, letters of recommendation, answers to those questions you asked about Brainard. You're going to see so much more than your stakeholders, so you're.
And for stress, we're not allowed to talk about any of it, outside of.
Correct, correct. But you'll see more, so when you make your decision, there might be people who say, why in the world did they move him forward? You saw things potentially in that application material that really told you this is a solid candidate. Maybe they didn't interview very well. You've seen more, though, so just remember, you as board members have a much larger sphere of information upon which to make your decisions. Two, keep in mind that this stakeholder summary report with 1,100 people aligned very closely with what the school board has already decided. I would be really concerned if you were not on the same page. If the stakeholders, or even an individual stakeholder group here or there, did not reflect what the board has already decided, then I'd be concerned that you might need to tap in a little bit more to stakeholders. So do keep in mind that alignment was a really good thing. The other thing to keep in mind is, as of now, and you can change this, the second round of interviews on May eighth, eighth, is slated to start at noon. So you would be asking stakeholders, if you have representative stakeholders giving you input, you're going to ask them to give up most of their day from noon until about 5:00 PM to provide input. So people who have day jobs would have a little more challenges coming in and doing that. Also, I would anticipate right now, if we start at noon, that the tours are occurring in the morning, where candidates are going through your buildings. Your administrators usually host them and tour them through the buildings, they have a chance to ask, ask questions, so on and so forth. So if you want some interaction with people, meet and greet, open mic, whatever it might be, you'd have to look at moving your interviews to later in the day, or doing something the night before on Tuesday, or on, uh, May 7th. So just some logistical considerations from a timing perspective, if you are involving stakeholders in round two interviews, right now, noon, you got to move them back if you want to do a lot more of this beforehand.
Randy?
Barb, you just hit on a point that just kind of rattled my cage, and that is, hey, uh, the survey kind of aligns pretty well with what's going on. I, like I said, I, I can be convinced of just option one. I mean, I, maybe we don't need any more input, uh, maybe it's just going to muddy the water, uh.
The only thing I would tack on there is that we all have email addresses, and we all have phones. We're always wide-open baskets to receive input at any phase of the process. Folks aren't shy about finding me when there's a school bus issue, they can call me about this. That's my take on it as well. All right, did anybody move off? I have four ones and two threes as of our, our straw poll. Has anybody moved from where they were?
I've moved to number one. I was in between, anyway, so, yeah.
I mean, I was, I mean, you made some good points, I would, uh, but I think Barb, like I said, she, she just kind of solidified it for me when she said, everything kind of aligns, you know?
Mr. Chair, uh, John, I'll move that we, as a board, select option number one to pursue going forward with the process.
Second.
All right, so we have a, a motion from Director Ward with a second from Director
But I think Barb, like I said, she, she just kind of solidified it for me when she said, everything kind of aligns. You know, gosh-
Mr. Chair, John, I'll move that we, as a board, select option number one to pursue going forward with the process.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Director Ward with a second from Director Heidman. We're using director for the official, for the full stuff, to advance using option one, which is using the stakeholder summary report. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote, please. Kelly?
Randy Heidman?
Yes.
Sarah Spear?
No.
John Ward?
Yes.
Yes.
Michelle Bracken?
Yes.
Do you have Don Beller?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, one item knocked down. Back to you, Barb.
All right, thank you very much. And it's really great that you can talk about all of this, because there's a lot of reasons to and reasons not to. And I appreciate the candor that you all used in talking about your options. And remember again, the doors are open to these interviews, and we would love people to come and watch the board conduct the interviews. And you will be lobbied. When these names go public, on the thirtieth, you will be lobbied. So I will plan to work with your district team to start thinking about interview tours, excuse me, candidate tours, the morning of the eighth, and we'll still go with the eight o'clock, excuse me, noon start for the interviews on the eighth with your round two finalists. And you'll make these decisions for sure on the thirtieth, but for right now, that's what we're planning on. If you have a chance to kind of mull over your options and you are interested in the idea of an open coffee and conversation, or cookies and coffee with your candidates on May eighth, let me know, and we can weave that into the tour. People would simply need to take time off during the morning then, and come in and have a chance to maybe shake the hand candidate. But if forty people show up, they're not all gonna have a chance to visit. But that interaction piece is still to be determined, and you can certainly do that as well if you want to on the eighth. Okay, thank you very much. That was really helpful. So now we're gonna move into interview training. And I believe you have some information there in front of you. I'm gonna screen share the packet. This is going to be, to you on the straight and narrow in terms of statutes and things that you can and cannot do. There we go. And once again, please interrupt me with questions. I can't see you now that I'm screen sharing. So this is what the packet looks like. I am just going to stop, start talking, but please do stop me when you need to know more, okay? Here's your vacancy brochure. This is what has been published and what piqued the interest for nine people to throw their hat in the ring. There we go. And there's the timeline that we were just talking about. So we were thinking about the eighth of May. We're talking right here at noon with the interview starting probably with two or three people, but we'll wait and see what the pool looks like. We'll wait and see how the round one interviews go on May second and third. All right. I'm gonna jump right to relevant law. Let me get my packet out here now. Okay. So I always remind people that the position of superintendent of schools is paid for with taxpayer dollars. It's a public position, and so you do need to have some things in mind when you are conducting this process. And there are laws. The biggest ones tend to be around these protected categories. So it's the don't ask questions. Some people say protected class. But all of these things in this blue box right here are protected, which means you cannot ask people directly about any of these things here, although there are ways to get to the heart of the issue if it's important to you. The ones we see most commonly, and we'll talk about bias in terms of this, would be, there tends to be age concerns, and there tends to be gender concerns as well, that people for some reason want to get deeper into the applicant's qualifications, and that is irrelevant to their ability to do the job. So we don't want you asking questions about that. There are indirect ways to ask about those. I won't dwell on these because you have these, and I'm not gonna tell you what you should or shouldn't ask, but please don't ask things about how much longer until you retire, do you own your own home, all those sorts of things, because these will get you in hot water with applicants, because they are definitely not an equal employment opportunity way to interview. When you ask interview questions, and you'll notice the ones that I suggested to you, do not touch on protected categories or classes at all. I won't go over this, but if for some reason you really wanted to know about someone's ancestry or national origin, et cetera, there are ways to ask that. I would not suggest asking them. We're simply in here saying that there's some nuance to asking questions about protected classes, but I don't know that it's necessary. I just want to make you aware that it is a possibility for you. All right. Getting dizzy here as we're doing this. Almost done with the protected classes. This is also common sense. And I would say that, it's one of the things that if you allow MSBA to suggest things, I would suggest on some of these things, from a legal perspective, you do take our recommendations and try not to ask those questions. And also then in terms of policy, I made this smaller because I just wanted to show you a couple of key things here. You've adopted policy 401. This is just the model policy, which is that you're an equal employment opportunity employer. So you do have to adhere to the laws therein. And then also, public and private personnel data. I'm gonna jump ahead in the packet just for a moment, because there's two things I've highlighted that I want to point out for you. And this is the first one. So on page twelve of this packet, in terms of data privacy laws, the names of applicants are private data, except when, I'm gonna jump ahead, except when they become finalists for an employment position. So what you're gonna start looking at tomorrow morning, the names of those applicants are private data, except when they become finalists for an employment position. So then I'm gonna go backwards and tell you that a finalist means an individual who is selected to be interviewed by the school board for a position. That is data privacy law in Minnesota. So notice it doesn't say semi-finalist versus finalist. We talked about this earlier. Your round one finalists will be called semi-finalists. It just makes sense. Semi-finalists in the first round, finalists in the second. But according to data privacy laws, it is anyone who's going to be interviewed by the school board for a position. So on the thirtieth, the names of your semi-finalists will become public. Okay, so that's all I want to say about the data privacy laws. And then we're gonna go to the policy about open meeting law. A lot here. I'm just gonna give you one final reminder. Policy 205 is about open and closed meetings. The only time you can close a meeting relative to your superintendent is for an evaluation. And when you conduct an evaluation of your superintendent, they have the right to request it be done in an open session. It is their prerogative. If they ask to be evaluated in an open meeting, you must do it. Everything else in policy 205 talks about when you can and cannot close meetings. Superintendent search does not fall anywhere in closed meeting provisions, so all in the open session. Other search considerations on statute, I'm gonna zoom in on this one, because this is something we added this year. There's a couple of key things. I'll go to two hundred here. No. There we go. All right, so here's the statutes. Now, in terms of a couple of things with your superintendent, the superintendent will be considered a teacher, okay? So in terms of employment, when you're defining a teacher, a superintendent is a teacher for purposes of subdivisions three and nineteen. And here's subdivision three. This is the one I want you to let me know. A teacher related by blood or marriage within the fourth degree computed by the civil law to a board member shall not be employed except by unanimous vote of the full board. When you name your semi-finalists, let's say you have four people that you choose to interview. They have the opportunity to become your superintendent. If any of you six board members are related to one of those people, you have to let me know. Because that will change the terms of the vote. It will have to be unanimous. It cannot just be a majority. If you do not recognize their names, or you know you're not related, and it does happen, believe it or not, it does happen in the world of education, that a board, a board's members related to a candidate, you have to tell me. That's on you, folks. It's not on me to know that thing. And then also, here's residency. A teacher or a superintendent shall not be required to reside within the employing district as a condition of their employment or continued employment. So if someone lives two hours away, but they can still complete the job in Brainerd, you cannot consider whether or not they say they're going to move to your community. That is illegal. And then there's some contractual stuff here. Obviously, you're required to have a licensed superintendent. The period is no longer than three years from the start of employment for a contract. You do not have to renew the contract. You can do whatever you'd like at the conclusion of the contract. And then in the last year, some people say, it's going really well. We want to lock them in for another couple of years. You can start three hundred sixty-five days prior to when it expires negotiating another contract. And it will be a new contract. They don't just roll over automatically. It is considered a renegotiation of a new contract every three years, or every two, or every one, whatever you settle on. Here's the special voting guidelines. The only one I'm gonna say that I want you to pay attention to is right here. Initial hire of a superintendent who is related to a board member. It must be a unanimous vote of the full board. So if for some reason, in round two, there's only five of you present, and one of the candidates is related to one of you to the fourth degree, you have to wait and take the vote when all six of you are present, if that's the person that you want to hire. So that's all I'm gonna say on statutes. These aren't relevant. So we're gonna talk through common interview mistakes, and remember to interrupt me if I'm going too fast. You're not gonna make any of these mistakes. When interviews roll around, we're gonna make sure that you, for example, have very complete selection criteria. And I would say, between your leadership profile, the hiring criteria survey you took to get us there, and the stakeholder summary report, your selection criteria is very, very clear. You need to make a good impression. It is a two-way street. People are interviewing you as much as you are interviewing them. You're not gonna ask any questions that are illegal, for sure. You're, you're not gonna ask vague questions. I do want to say, when it comes to the questions, remember we talked about the application. Those questions, you had three of them, were quite broad. Think of it like a funnel. Round two is a little bit more specific. When you get to, excuse me, round one is a little bit more specific. Round two is going to be your opportunity to ask very specific questions, to really get a handle on, does this person understand what we need? And so it's gonna become more specific as we go. So the round one questions are sort of broad, but not very. They'll be more specific in the second round. Please keep the big picture in mind. Probe motivation. Why do you want to work here? Try to ascertain from their answers to the questions what it is they want out of this opportunity. And you'll, you'll get that feeling, and you'll have that EMD form to use to also score their answers. It's not a one-way street. Take good notes. If you do interview four to six people, it's a lot of interviews, and you're going to forget by the third or fourth interview what the first two people said. Jot down notes during the interview to make sure that you're able to refer back to it during deliberations. However, your notes are subject to a data request. So please be sure that everything you write down is professional and appropriate. In other words, don't write down anything about their age, their gender, their race, any of those things, because those are protected classes, and you do not want your notes to include anything about those classes. So jot down the things you need to write down to remember what you want to say about the candidates when you're making your decisions about who moves on. Take your time making a decision. If you don't have a decision the first night, or you want to get some more time, you certainly have the option to do that. You also have the option to suspend the search. If you don't find the right person, we will help you find an interim, and then we'll do another search for you at no additional charge next year. Probably start in January or so with the second search. So don't make a quick decision if it doesn't feel right to you. Here's the don't settle information. And then we're gonna talk a little bit here about the bias. Please do check your bias at the door, because we all have them. And there's some information here on what is bias. I'm not gonna read this by any means, but it is something that you carry around with you without any conscious decisions. I call it assumptions. We make assumptions about people based on what we see. I'm just gonna give you a couple examples of bias that we have seen school boards actually have during the interview process. For instance, we had a board that had two very fine candidates in the last round. And so during deliberation, we encourage people to focus on the positive, to talk about the strengths of the candidates, because they've done so in a public meeting, and we don't want anyone's reputation being harmed by a board member being extraordinarily negative about their candidacy. So try to keep it positive. But in this case, they were both very strong people. And they're going around the room, and they're asking board members to say, what did you really like about John Doe? And one person said, you know what? I thought he had a really strong personality. He was very direct. I think he'd fit in really well in this community. I could see it being a fit. And they nodded and agreed, and they kept going around the circle. Well, they got to the next candidate, and the board chair said, okay, now let's talk about Jane Doe. What do you think? This exact same board member said, you know, she has a really strong personality. She's very direct, and I do not think that's gonna be a good fit for our community. Verbatim, the same thing for both candidates. I have never seen a more clear example of gender bias in my life. Strong personality on the female candidate was a bad thing. Strong personality on the, the male candidate was a good thing. And so that board member did not even know that they were biased in that way, that they thought of leaders as being different qualities depending upon if you were a man or a woman. So then we added this section, so we can talk about that. That was a gender bias one. An age bias one was pretty clear a couple of years ago, because the school board, they made assumptions based upon the age of the two finalists. One was probably in their late fifties, the other was probably in their mid-thirties to forty. And a board member said, you know what? I think Tim is probably gonna be way more fluent in social media. He's the younger, he's the younger one. I know that, you know, that generation really understands how to tweet, and we want to up our profile on social media. So I think Tim would have an advantage there. I just can't see George being very good at that, because, you know, he's a little older. You know, they didn't want to say that. Well, they agreed that that's really important, and social media was a priority for the board, but they hadn't asked a question about it. It didn't come up until during deliberations. Luckily, they didn't make their decision based upon that, because the older candidate was a fanatic tweeter. Every day, several times a day, was tweeting. The younger candidate avoided social media at all costs. Was not even on LinkedIn or something like that. So it was an age bias, assuming that technologically, the younger candidate was going to be better than the older, and they couldn't have been more wrong. The last bias that you sometimes see is familiarity bias. Boy, it's hard to say that word. If you're familiar with a candidate, you will be biased either for or against them. Most common, it's with an internal candidate. And so when we have internal candidates, they have to abide by the same data privacy laws as everybody else from outside the district. Sometimes an internal candidate has a leg up because they are a known factor. Sometimes they have a leg down, if that's such a thing as saying, in that they're a known factor. So it's the good news, bad news, of you know a lot about this person. Maybe they're not already employed in the district, but maybe they're in a neighboring district, and you've heard of them, or you have people whose family members work in that district. Being familiar with people can work against you during the search process. So you need to try to remove that bias and look at them as objectively as you possibly can, especially when you're comparing them to other candidates that you are not familiar with. The flip side of that is the mystique that we sometimes assign to out-of-state candidates. There may be people coming in from the East Coast, or South, or the West Coast, wanting your job. If that's the case, you always get a bit of a rush that, wow, someone from, pick a state, wants this job. And so you have this moment of thinking that they might be better than the Minnesota candidates. And Minnesota candidates have the same thing when they apply for jobs out of state. There's a bit of a thrill of someone that you know nothing about, who is a fresh start, that's coming in to, to want to lead your district. It's a blank canvas, and that's a good thing sometimes, and sometimes it's not. So just try to tamp down your assumptions about people when you see these candidates, not only on paper and you read about them, but also when you are interviewing them. So I won't go through this, you know, explicit bias. If you are, for any reason, someone who does understand stereotypes and you have them, please acknowledge them if you have those, because we all have them. You can't be human and not have bias and make assumptions about people. I'm gonna pause for just a second. Chair Boils, is there any questions from anyone, or should I just keep talking?
DJ, anything?
I don't think so. I'm keeping up so far. I mean, the do's and don'ts are, are pretty important. You know, in my real job, I've real familiar with all this stuff, and it's no different in the school than it is in anywhere else. These aren't, this isn't school-specific. You can't ask those questions to anybody. So there you go. So I don't think there's any problem with that, and I think with our bunch, we're pretty capable people. I don't think we'll be messing that up. And there you go. You just kind of gotta... Yeah, it's pretty easy to me, because I just think of, well, I want somebody asking me those questions, you know, and they're kind of unusual questions. Are you pregnant? I mean, what are you talking about? Like, whoever asked that? You have to be crazy. So I think we'll be, I think we'll get through that just fine.
Yeah, I have a question, Barb. What if you have a personal relationship with a candidate, or you worked with them, or under them? Is, are there any restrictions with regard to that?
Thank you for asking that question. No, there are not. There are not restrictions. It's something you should be aware of in terms of your own bias for or against that person. You can't, however, really be in the educational sphere without bumping up against some people all the time. Other districts, your own district, your own jobs, you're gonna have people you know or know of, no matter what. So it's not a problem. You don't need to disclose it. You don't need to excuse yourself or recuse yourself from a vote. The one thing is if there is, you know, people talk the sort of conflict of interest statement around, kind of loosely. Oh, there's conflict of interest, because, you know, they used to work together. Or conflict of interest because their son works with his daughter. You just, all these kind of relationships, or a web that's kind of woven around some candidates. None of that is a concern unless it's financial. And I'm sure you know this from your work as school board members. If it's a conflict of interest, that implies a financial implication, that there is something in it for you financially if they get the job. Then there's a conflict of interest. But if not, all these other circumstances are just circumstances. People are people. People know each other. People are people, people know each other, people engage in bowling leagues or, you know, basketball. You never know who you're going to bump up against and you'll probably know some of the folks, but there's no problem with it unless it's about money. Then you need to let me know.
Any other questions for Barb? All right.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. So here's some scenarios. I'm not going to go through all of them and we're not going to ask you to sort of turn to your shoulder partner and try and ask and answer what's going to happen. I'm just going to let you know that these things do happen. Sometimes you get down to two finalists. And with a six-member board, it might be a three-three tie. And what happens is the sides start to dig in because you both want what you want in terms of sides. It can happen. So what we need to do then is kind of revisit, okay, why do you feel that this person is the best candidate? Why do you feel this person is the best candidate? Sometimes there's assumptions being made about their age. You'll notice right here about visibility, energy, et cetera, et cetera. When I say, how would you board manage that discussion? I'm just going to suggest that you do this whenever there is sort of a deadlock is you go back to that leadership profile. Returning to the front page of that vacancy brochure with all of the things that you said you wanted sometimes can help break a logjam. Okay, so look at the criteria you've identified in your leadership profile. The second thing I would say you do is go to the stakeholder summary report. Take a look at what was most important to the people in your community. If you need to, you can take a look at it in terms of which hat were they wearing when they took it. So between that leadership profile and the stakeholder summary report, you should start to see some movement if you have your heels dug in on two people. This is also the only time that I would say, if you just can't move off the dime, maybe you go to the opportunities for growth. So if you have two candidates that are both strong and you are just split on which one to hire, you could suggest that, well, this person's financial experience is just not as strong as this person's. So you aren't criticizing this person for not being as strong financially, but it is a deficit compared to the other person. So we'll talk about this when we go through the interview script and the deliberation script. But if you have to go to a tiebreaker after those other attempts, you could talk about opportunities for growth or weaknesses in order to try to get some movement. Otherwise, you compromise. If there's three finalists, maybe the two that have, you know, dug in their heels on a side could find common ground in the third candidate. And so that's an option too. Thinking collaboration and compromise without sacrificing your own values as an individual board member and who you represent is important. The next one is when things get personal. This doesn't happen very often, but if there is old baggage amongst the board about past hurts and there hasn't been a resolution to those hurts, sometimes comments from board member to board member get personal. And that's unacceptable. So in this case, if it does start to devolve into negativity, and I do not think that's going to happen. I've watched this board work together thus far and I've been really impressed. If it does, the chair has a gavel for a reason. So the chair can simply gavel to a recess, take a break and let cooler heads prevail. Go for a walk, come back in 10 minutes and sometimes that's all it takes. We do not want it to get personal about board members or about your candidates because again, remember that you're doing this in a public session and we want to be super, super careful. And then the last one is, I think Chair Boyle's alluded to this. During deliberations on your final two, one board member says, well, I have some information from someone who's in the know about one of these candidates. Can I share that information? If that happens, please don't surprise us at the board table with that. If you have information from credible sources that you are concerned about this candidate, call me and talk it through with me first. What we want you to do is base your deliberation on facts. And rumors, misinformation runs rampant because the closer you get to naming your superintendent, the higher people's level of anxiety goes. And I'm sure you experienced this a couple of years ago, but the closer you get to making a decision, the heavier the lobbying is for and against people. And I'll bet you at least 50% of the time, there is no truth to what you are being told about these candidates. So you have to be very, very careful not to believe everything that you are told, not to believe everything that you hear or you find on social media. There are lots of explanations for lots of different things. So please be careful you're not sharing rumors or innuendos. It's not fair to the candidates, it's not fair to your fellow board members. But do call me if you hear things that are concerning. If you hear it from one or two people, people have opinions. If you hear a pattern of concerns, that's when I really would appreciate you calling me so we can talk it through one-on-one. And you can call me anytime, by the way, as one-on-one, you individual board members. You can't call each other and talk about candidates. You can't discuss strategy or who you're going to vote for. That's completely outside of the open meeting law. You can call me individually. So I'm happy to be someone you bounce off concerns if any of these situations start to arise. Okay.
To that, we're going to have.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, DJ.
Yep.
So we can't talk between each other, not a group, but like one-on-one about these candidates?
I would say you could share information. You could share information one-on-one. However, you cannot talk about strategy or decide how you're going to vote or if you will or won't support somebody. Those deliberations need to be at the board table. But you can talk to one another to share information. And real often, for instance, the board chair, I might send something to the board chair. He disseminates it one way to all the board members via email, but you do not reply all. Obviously, the serial meeting is a bad idea. But you are human beings and you do live in the community and you are sometimes acquaintances or friends. So you could talk one-on-one, but just be very careful that you're not planning what's going to happen at the board meeting. That would be when you cross.
I see.
Got it?
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yep.
And then for my part, based on what we went through last time around, what I would say is this. April 30th, whoever, whether it's four candidates or six or whatever that we choose from the pool of nine that we will now see tomorrow, though obviously those people will only be known to us until we announce who the finalists, the six, five, four, whatever finalists are. Once those people are publicly available, I would hope that any member of the community that has information of these people would come forward then instead of an hour before we pick a finalist or pick a superintendent. I have some PTSD and some bitter feelings about how that went down last time and I'm not going to lie about it. It was, it was a drive-by, there's no other way. I'm not sure that we, it doesn't mean that what we ended up deciding was the wrong decision by any means. It was just, it was, it was a flawed process. Now, I will say, I have the utmost confidence in Barb, where the firm that we hired last time did not handle that situation well at all. So I'm not deeply concerned about it. But, you know, depending on who these candidates end up being, you might be surprised what people start calling you and telling you.
Barbara, you guys are going to pick out the candidates that you think best fit our survey and the survey that you gave us and kind of narrow it down for us a little bit. See, we wouldn't have strong feelings about somebody else, but, but that's kind of what your job is. Do I understand that properly?
Yes, we will look at the list of nine, for example. And then we have a team of vetters that are former superintendents or school board members and they individually go through and give each person a one through five rating. One is no, five is yes, three is maybe. And then we end up having a meeting a few days later where everyone's results are collated and we're like, okay, these appear to be the strongest candidates. Here's some that didn't score as well. Why or why not? So we spend about an hour, two hours talking about these people. We end up with a top list and sometimes it's a top four, it might be a top eight, you never know. Then what we do is we will have, our former superintendents will vet them further. So they call and arrange a pre-interview with each of the people we're going to recommend. So we do a pre-interview with the candidate on the phone. We do a social media sweep. We also talk to their references. And once we've done that, we put together presentation forms on those we feel are the strongest between your leadership profile and the stakeholder report. And those are the ones I'll present at the meeting on the 30th. Candidate A, B, C, we're recommending B and C. And I'll read something that tells you a little bit about why we're recommending B and C. The challenge for us can be that we are limited by data privacy law to only contacting the references that they list on their application materials. So people who are listed as references or have written letters of recommendation, that's who we can call. We cannot go outside of that and call people that, hey, do you know this person? Because I'm interested in thinking if you, you know, would you think they'd be a good superintendent? Anyone who can figure out MSBA search season, this search can figure out that that person has applied for your job. And we just violated data privacy law by outing their name. So we are really truly limited to calling people who've offered to be a reference or know this person well enough to be a reference. So every once in a while, the references are telling tremendous things about a person. Not very often. But if we had been able to go off the beaten path, at that point, we might not have recommended them. That's that catch 22 of data privacy laws here in Minnesota. But we will do our absolute level best to bring you the strongest candidates with what we are provided. And then you'll decide whether you want to take our list, go off our list and select other people or not include people that we're recommending. Long answer, sorry. I hope that was okay.
No, good answer, yeah.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay, so should I keep going or is there more questions?
Keep going.
All right. I'm not going to spend time on these pages, pages 33 through 39. Those are possible interview questions. Now I've created some that are custom designed for Brainerd that we're going to talk about here at the end of the evening. But if you liked questions in this packet, you can let me know by number which ones you want to add to the list. And so that's the conversation we're going to have here before we're all done. So I'm going to skip right past those. And I'm going to talk about the candidates term. Oops, that's not what I meant to do. There we go. Make it bigger. All right, so candidates are getting more and more savvy about asking you questions. And hopefully there's time at the end of their interview, these are interviews. Hopefully there's five or 10 minutes remaining when they're done that they can ask you questions that they are curious about. So a couple of things, when they're asking you questions, please speak up. Don't have one or two board members do all of the speaking for the rest of you. And I'm not worried about that with this board either. But candidates want to see how you build off of one another's ideas. So if they ask you a question like, what are the strengths of the school district? These are just some possibilities. The chair would facilitate the question, say, hey, great question. Does anyone want to answer that? And maybe he'll start and then someone else says, I'd like to add to that. So try to answer the questions. Not that all six of you have to answer both or all three questions. We'll run out of time if you do that. But if you have a passion area of the district that you are more familiar with and that you really feel qualified to answer, please do. Because they want to get to know you. And sometimes their chance to ask you questions, these are just some possibilities, is a really good chance for them to get to know you. It helps them make a good decision for themselves as well. Now, when I say they're getting more savvy, I'll give you one example of a candidate. I was really impressed. They asked a question that was very specific to a management issue. I don't remember what it was. I think it was something about finance, very in-the-weeds question. And the board kind of looked at each other and said, does anyone want to answer that? And they all sort of said, no. And so the board chair then said, well, I'll tell you what, we're a governing board. We are not, we're not a management board, so we don't know the answer to that question. We would delegate that to our superintendent and our business manager. They definitely could know the answer to that. So please reach out to them tomorrow if you want an answer. The candidate was trying to ascertain whether or not this board was going to micromanage them. So by asking a very specific, very technical question, the board handled it authentically. They didn't try to fumble their way through it, but they honestly said, we don't know because that is a function of our business manager. And so that's something that we trust them to do and do well. So they're getting really savvy with the questions they ask. So please do answer honestly. And if you would have had an answer to that micromanaging question, answer it because you want the right person in there. And if they want to work hand-in-hand with a management board, great. They need to know that, as do you. If there's someone looking for a board that stays at a 30,000-foot level, if they ask something like that, if that's who you are, please confirm that as well. All right, I'm going to keep going because we're almost done with the interview training. Reference checks, this is something we advise a board member or two to do between round one and round two. So between May 2nd and May 8th, I would like to see at least one board member volunteer to do some reference checking. These are some questions you can ask if you want to call some board members or some district employees or some citizens. Now, people used to be able to do, they had more time when searches took five or six months. They had time to go do site visits. And board members would go to the community and walk up and down Main Street and they'd wander in the cafe and they'd just ask people, hey, what do you think about your high school principal? You know, they've applied for our job and we're interviewing them tomorrow. It's gotten so quick now that very few people do site visits anymore, but they do make phone calls. You are not bound by that same list of references in their packet. And sometimes people will share things with a school board member that they will not tell the search firm. They're just more comfortable being completely honest with you. 99% of the time what happens is if a school board member from Brainerd makes a couple of reference check calls on this candidate and a couple on that candidate, it confirms what you already know about this person. There are not going to be any surprises. 1% of the time you might find someone that says, well, I got to tell you what, the truth is, we want to get rid of them, so everyone's giving them glowing references, but you should know, they never do any follow-through, they don't do what they say. And so that's, wow, kind of good to know, right? So we do ask a board member or two to be willing to do this between round one and round two. You don't have to commit tonight, but please think about if any of you six would like to make a couple of phone calls. And then you report back to the board after round two with, this is what I learned. And it's very high level, it's like two minutes long. But a couple of calls in your due diligence, I think, would be a really good idea. So if you want to do that, let me know and I can work with one or two of you after round one to do so. We'll talk more about this on the 30th as well. And then lastly, deliberating in public. These folks want your job. You've interviewed them, they were probably nervous. You might have audience members watching, making them even more nervous. So when you talk about them in public, we again, just say, try to focus on the positives because there's a lot that's gone into this. Their name has gone public. It might not have gone over very well in their own district that they are looking at the opportunity in Brainerd. So please be respectful and think about how you would like to be discussed in terms of your interview. Let's see, just the do's and don'ts. Everyone's going to have strengths that you talk to in an interview. No one is going to be perfect because no one is perfect. That's why we've asked your stakeholders to prioritize so many of the things that we did because you'll find people who are really good at this and not as good at that. They still might be a really great superintendent for you if the thing that they're great at is really important to you as a board and to your stakeholders. So don't look for perfection, but to focus on, do focus on the things that are strong about their candidacy and see if it fits. And if it's not in alignment with you and your community, don't settle. We'll do that, we'll do that interim search for you and that won't take very long and then we'll redo this whole thing next year. So here's some do's and don'ts. Again, common sense, golden rule, how would you like to be treated? How would you like to be discussed in an open meeting when you just went through an interview process? And that's all I have, other than the contract, which I know you all have the model contract that I emailed to you after our last meeting. So I will stop. That concludes our interview training, but you do have the information to refer back to and you do have my email and my phone number if there are things that you want to follow up with me about. Any questions?
Any questions specific to training? The training that we just went through? That will transition into what we put on the agenda as an action item, which is to discuss the interview questions that Barb has. So keep that separate, anything about the training that we just went through. Going once, going twice? All right, then we'll move on to considering interview questions, interview schedule and interview procedures.
All right, great, thank you so much. So Kelly has a copy of the questions. There are 36. I'm going to ask her to hand those out. I also did email them to DJ earlier, right before the meeting. So I'll wait till you have them and then I'll tell you what I want you to do. This is going to be like homework, five minutes, maybe 10 minutes, because I want you all to have a pen. She's going to collect these after the meeting and she's going to shred them. So for now, you can write anything on here that you want. On this list, there's an opening question and a closing question that are sort of typical. We usually assume that those are a part of the process, but if you don't like them, we can change them. The rest of these categories are your leadership profile. So what I'm going to suggest is you individually each pick two favorite questions in each category. So between questions two and six, if each of you would circle two of those and then do the same thing for seven to 11, 12 to 16, 17 to 22, 23 to 28. I'm going to talk more about that when we get to it because that's really a detailed hiring criteria and we're going to talk a lot more about that, I think, in round two. And then between questions 29 and 35, also pick two. So I'm going to mute myself and let you do that. And then we're going to reconvene and I'm going to do a tally and just say, how many like question two? How many like question three, question four? And then we're going to go back and talk about them. But we're going to try not to read the questions out loud. Any questions before we start? All right, thank you. I'll be here back in about five minutes, maybe 10 if you need it. I'll be here in, back in about five minutes, maybe 10 if you need it.
We only get to choose one, right?
Two per.
Oh, two per category? Yeah, I showed it on the screen there.
Or you can just copy off Sarah's paper.
Yeah, you want me to hand you mine?
They're just examples from other situations she's been in?
Is that from the Q and A session?
That's what I was wondering.
They did? Yeah, maybe it is.
Oh, yeah. What do we do at the end? Nothing, I think they're just there for
Those last two questions? I should have said that, sorry, those last two questions, when we asked for questions in advance for the Q and A, and we asked for questions about the superintendent's search process, we did get some questions for the candidates. So during the Q and A, if you've watched it, I just acknowledged that, hey, we received some questions that I can't answer today, but I'll be sure the board sees them. So just wanted to fulfill my promise to stakeholders that didn't submit questions for your candidates.
I mean, I love them, I think they're great.
I think they're pointed.
Yes.
I circled them both. I think for the technology question, we should just make each one of the applicants read one of John's iPad emails.
So I'm going to wait and have you tell me when you're ready for me to start taking the tally.
Looks like we're close.
So we don't have to do anything at the end, right?
Nope.
Nope.
What questions, the questions?
It looks like pending, DJ, everything good on your end?
I'm good.
Okay, it looks like we're ready, Barb.
Sounds good, thank you. So the first go-around is just to raise your hand if you feel you'd like that question, if it's in your top two in each of those categories. We're looking eventually for about 12 to 15 questions for a one-hour interview, that's plenty. Some districts only do eight to 10. Maybe more in round two, though, but 18, 20 questions is too many. So we're going to try and winnow this list way down. Once we've gone through it and got an initial sense of where the board landed on these, then we're going to go through and try to find at least two in each category, maybe three, if it's an area that the board wants to emphasize. And can you wordsmith? Yes, you can. I just prefer not to do it in this open meeting. So if there's someone on the board that has experience in hiring or firing or does a lot of interviewing and has questions that they prefer that are similar, I'll work with them one-on-one and send those questions in an email to the board tomorrow. And you can let me know if you'd like them better. So you're not stuck with what I'm recommending, but you do have some opportunities to create or craft your own if we can do it in a way without them going public. So number one is a typical question. Is everyone comfortable with that, or is anyone opposed to asking question one? Okay, we're going to keep question one then. Alright, so between two and six, you each got to choose four. Raise your hand, please, if you like question two.
Where are we at?
Uh, two through six.
Question?
What, John?
Did anyone like question two as one of your top two?
No, no, choose two, which she's just now asking.
If you pick two, then you put your hand up.
But if you, if you circled two, she wants you to put up your hand then.
Okay? Alright, if you circled question two, raise your hand. Zero. Question three? Zero. Question four?
Plus whatever DJ did.
Alright, six. Great, question five? One, two, three, four. I can't see the left, I'm sorry, is it Michelle over here? There, oh, okay, there you go. Thank you. So was that six also?
It was five.
Question five? Five people on question five, okay.
I'm gonna add ball out.
Question six, one, okay. Terrific. Alright, for questions seven through 11, how many liked seven? Two. Question eight? Five. Question nine? Nine? Five? Question 10? Zero. Question 11? Zero. Okay, that's great, because the consensus is really helpful. Alright, next page. 12 through 16, how many liked 12? One? Question 13? Three?
I have 13, I have 13, sorry.
Four. Okay, four for question 13. Question 14? Four. Four for question 14. Question 15? Three. Question 16? Zero. Alright, 17 to 22, who likes 17? One. Eighteen? Two. Nineteen? One. Twenty? One. Twenty-one? One. Twenty-two? Six. Winner, winner, chicken dinner. Alright. Let's go on to the next.
I mean, none of these are bad, like I don't feel bad being the one, right?
No, they are, that's the thing.
Question, this category is very specific. So this, remember, we'll keep it a little bit broad in round one. It's very possible that we ask much more specific questions about some of those areas in round two, unless you wanted to get that specific in round two. So this is just for starters. How many on 23 to 28, how many liked 23? Two. 24? Two. 25? Oh, we lost DJ. Should we wait a second? It says he left the meeting. Okay. Maybe accidentally logged off, I'm just going to pause.
He's back.
I'm back.
Alright, thank you. So I'm going to be sure, again, I didn't lose track. 23, if you like 23, please raise your hand. I had two people. Yep, 24. I also had two for 24. Just one? Okay, 24 is one. 25? One. 26? One. 27? Two for 27? And 28? Four, okay. Next section goes on to this page as well as the next. So between 29 and 35, how many preferred 29? Zero. Thirty? Three, okay. Thirty-one? Three. Thirty-two? Zero. Alright, 33? One. Thirty-four? Two. And 35? Three. Could I ask if you had 34, if you'd raise your hand again? I saw two, but it might have been one more, 34? It is just two, okay, sounds good. And then is the last question, okay? That's usually standard as well, but, okay. Does anyone want anything that's in the bullet points to be talked and discussed? I didn't number them, but alright, so I'm going to go through and what I like to look for is anything that has a majority of the board. So if it had four or more votes, I'm going to circle it as one of the questions. So question one? Four? Five? Eight? And nine? On the front page, one, four, five, eight and nine? On the next page? 13 and 14? Uh, the bottom of the page, 22? There wasn't enough in that group other than 22? 28? And? We didn't have any home runs in 29 to 35. There were a couple that had, so like 30, 31 and 35. Each had three votes. So if you could just indulge me for a minute and look at question 30, 31, and 35, I'm going to ask you to vote again to kind of break this logjam. 30, 31 and 35, okay?
So we're still picking two out of those three?
Yes, you can pick two out of three.
So it's 30, 31?
And 35.
Why can't we have all three?
Because we can only ask two in that category.
Well, because we have
Not that we can't.
We have a category prior to that where we only have one.
Well, we'll get to that one, she's just trying to bust out the low-hanging fruit.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so you have three questions. If you had to pick two, how many liked question 30? One, two, three people liked 30. How many liked question 31?
Is this the second round now?
Yeah.
Second round.
Oh, so that's four on 30?
Four on 30, okay, got it, thank you. How about 31?
I can have 30.
Four, okay, I see four.
I want.
35?
I'm a 35.
Four, okay, wow, that didn't really help us.
I mean, I'm going to be honest, they're all three fine. I don't, I don't really have a
Okay. Now, keep in mind that stakeholders had some pretty clear things to say about some of these categories. So I'm wondering about and they are similar, some of these are similar in vein. And 30 and 31 are very similar. Could you support 35? I've, I've seen questions 30 and 31, sometimes sort of a generic answer sounds really good. 35 does ask more specific things about that category that might be more useful. Can I choose 35 for now? Okay, none of them are bad, to your point earlier, so I'm going to start with that. So of those I selected, which had four or more votes plus the tiebreaker, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. You have 11 questions as-is. So now, if we go back and take a look, you do have two in your first category. And they're different enough. Sometimes if the questions are similar, we can strike one. You have two in the next category, eight and nine. Do you feel like eight and nine are similar enough where you only want to ask one of those? Would a candidate give you the same answer to both question eight and question nine? Or is the first half of question nine is different enough?
I think they're different. One's asking about previous, the other's asking about prospectively.
Okay, so we're keeping eight and nine. How about 13 and 14? Yep, those are pretty different. I'm going to tell you one thing that is interesting. Between 17 and 22, uh, question 21? In a district as In a district as polarized as your stakeholder survey indicates to me, that has proven to be actually a very helpful question for the board to determine where they stand in the first round. I'm only saying that because I've had districts that are very divided and people's initial reaction to it is, no, I'm not gonna ask it. And then when I say, would it be helpful in helping you understand where they stand in terms of moving them on to round two, people have said yes. So you don't have to ask it, but it's proven, um, successful in other very divided communities. So it's up to you. I'd need at least three or four of you, four of you to say that it's okay to ask 21 to add it in. I'm not gonna talk you into anything, I'm just saying it has worked.
I'm, I'm on board with that, given that all the other ones are kind of, like 17 through 20, they were all kind of, I just kind of picked one because it was the least, I don't know, exciting to me. And I like your logic, Barb.
Yeah, I like it.
That doesn't bother me.
Yeah, I like it.
If you're okay with asking question 21, you do have room, please raise your hand so I know it's at least four of you that are okay with asking it. Okay, there's enough. Okay, so we're gonna ask 21. And I think it's, it's a window into some of the issues you have in your district that you really need to know where your new leader, with that, so it's helped elsewhere. Um, on the next one, there's only one that rose to the top for 23 to 28. So the next closest were 23 and 27. Does anyone want to advocate for any of those, 23 to 27? Or are you okay with just the one? In terms of that area?
Which one? Are you talking about 22?
Uh, no, 20, 23 to 27, each got one or two votes. And we only have one in that category. But that's okay. That's okay to have one in that category.
What is the one that we have?
28.
Well, I was a 20, I was...
I like the data stuff.
Go ahead, DJ.
I like the data stuff. I mean, I like 25, I like 26, I mean... Uh, how else do you pick the curriculum? By how you feel that day? I think that this is really important, that student achievement outcomes. And 25 and 26, I can live with that.
I would agree. I think 23 also says data, it doesn't use the word data. It says information instead, but it's the same thing.
Yeah, I had 23 as a...
I think an important question as well.
I just like, it's got a little more depth than the other two.
I like it too.
23?
I didn't vote for it originally, but yeah, 23, I think has a little more meat on it. It gets to DJ's point, and then I think it kind of incorporates the other two.
Should I change the word information to data? If I change that word, does that help? 23 to become stronger? Information swapped out with data?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
So we have 23, 25, or 26? How many, if you had to choose one, 23, 25, or 26, they are similar? How many would say you prefer 23 with me changing that word? Information to data with 23? How many would support that one? You can live with it? Okay, so we're gonna go with 23 with that word changed. All right, so the next category, we have one selected, 35? That gives you how many total? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11? 12, 13? That gets you to 13. Did anyone have anything from the interview training packet that you were absolutely blown away by and want to include? Because we gotta go back to that if you want to look at pages 33 to 39. It's up to you. Or you could also take a deeper look at those for round two questions. Because I'm gonna come to May 2nd, round one, with another list of suggested questions, including some scenario questions that get at the heart particularly, I think, of some stakeholder survey information. But if you see ones in here, you could email me the numbers you want me to add for the board's consideration. You could do that, or you could look through them tonight and add to the list right now for round one.
In the, uh, biographical and self-assessment area on the sample interview questions, Barb, that you had sent as part of the packet?
Their number.
I had chose number 13.
I did too. And actually, a lot of those, I, I went through and just, Randy did as well, and highlighted the questions that I thought were very important, important. And 13 was one that I felt also strong about.
I like that one, and I like number 13 as well.
Number one?
Number 15.
Yeah, what has been the most, 15?
Try not to read them out loud if you can.
I wonder, I wonder, is there a way that we could combine 13 and 15? Because I think, I, I like, I mean, 15 is a very good one too, I mean, and... Soon for a while, we could complete that.
What are we trying to accomplish? We've got, we all, 35 is a winner, right? We're trying to find one more question?
Yes.
That we're doing? And now we're going past all the 150 questions to try to find one?
You have 13 so far. Can you add one or two? I wouldn't add more than two more to round one.
I like, I like fif, if we're gonna pick between those two, I like 15 because it's asking for a specific recounting of something that the candidate actually did versus a philosophical question about something years from now. It's kind of my take on it.
Yes. Gives us direct insight into something that's happened. Kind of dealing with adversity or with...
Yeah, that's, I mean, I think they're, they're both very good.
Yeah, they are really good questions.
Yeah, they are.
And remember, some of this can be woven in for the finalist rounds too.
Yeah.
Or, or derivatives of this stuff. This is just for the, for the first field of candidates that we go through.
What about 33? What do you got? 33?
I had 33 circled.
I didn't on the first round, but it's...
I think it's important.
That's a fairly common one in round two, for that exact reason. It's a more specific question.
One of the things that I, as I looked at the whole packet that you sent though, Barb, 178, right? And again, um, when I read through those, if I'm interviewing for something, I'm gonna bring up everything I've done in my life. So if, so if a question pertained to what kind of experience or what did you do? I kind of didn't even select that because I, I, I expect to hear that. You understand what I'm saying? So I wanted, I wanted some other kind of information other than that. And maybe that doesn't make any sense to anybody else, but it makes sense to me.
I'm ordering donuts. How many do we have? How many do we have left?
I want the long time.
Can John have the one with sprinkles on it?
Yeah.
We want the long John with the sprinkles?
We had a baker's dozen.
So are we looking for one in the last category? Is that what we're doing?
A baker's dozen?
Yeah, 35 are in.
Yeah, you could stop with the 13 you have right now. I just wanted to make sure I gave you a chance to go back to this. If you feel, feel there's some gaps in the first 13 you chose. I wrote down question 13, question 15, question 33. You could choose one of those for round one, or all of them, or put them all off to round two. But if you feel there's something that would help you decide.
Okay, so what kind of questions, what, what kind of questions, Barb, would we be asking then in round two? I mean, um, more specific related questions or...
Yes.
Golly, then maybe 13 and 15.
By, by now we've got your reports, so we could go more specifically into the areas that your... Your stakeholders want some more information on student achievement, curriculum, student behavior, those sorts of things. So we can ask some scenario questions. This is the scenario, what would you do? Or what have you done with this? Parental involvement. We've got some round two questions that do go deeper. But you can do whatever you would like.
I like the idea of just having a question that kind of gets to a more personal sort of response to a challenge they had. It just gives us a little bit more of a window into who they are.
Make them think on their feet a little bit. I would agree with you.
Yeah, yeah.
First round?
For the first one, just one. You know, one where it's just a little bit more personal and...
And then I think I would, I would say that for 33, um, that was the one Barb said is typically deployed in the final round.
Yeah.
So it's probably between 13 and 15 then, if we want one of those think on your feet type of things.
And I like 15.
I don't want to take over Barb's, I don't want to usurp her hand raising thing. All right. People for 13?
I, 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 I think 13's me.
So DJ said 13? Anybody else for 13?
No, I think 15, I think 15's better than 13.
Oh, okay, then I think everybody does.
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, yeah, so I think we want to mix.
I think it's kind of a, it's kind of... I don't know why we're asking that question, but that's just me.
Well, it's probably what happened.
Well, I, I, I think...
What are you gonna answer, the strategic plan deal? What are you gonna do with the strategic plan? Well, I'm gonna implement it. I'm gonna just kick right ass on that deal. I mean, it's gonna be great. I'm gonna get that strategic plan going.
Wait, 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 no. You gotta go to the sample interview questions for 13 and 15.
Oh, he's going to be...
Oh, I'm talking about 15 on the sheet.
No, 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 on the sample ones, the 178 list.
178 list.
Oh yeah, I like 15 a lot. I like 15 a lot.
Okay, then we're good. You're 6-0 on that, bad boy.
That puts you at 14 questions for round one. Are you okay with those?
That should be more...
Are you?
Yeah, I mean, it's what do you, what's your experience?
It's a good number. It's a good number, because you don't want someone to run out of time. And I will be there holding up signs to let them know they have 30 minutes left, and 15 minutes, and five minutes. If they're really long-winded and can't get through 14 questions in an hour, that shows you some time management skills on behalf of that candidate. If they get done in 30 minutes with 14 questions, then you know that they're very succinct. Brevity's important to them. So 14's a good number. I'm okay with it, but honestly, it's your search. You tell me what you want me to do.
You're not interviewing us.
14 sounds great.
Okay.
Kevin, John, Randy, DJ, all eliminated, round one.
So I am gonna ask Kelly to come back and collect those from the five of you in the room. Thank you so much, Kelly, if you'd shred those after the meeting. And then DJ, if you'd just delete them from your computer, that'd be great. I have a couple of very, very loose ends that I need to just confirm some things with the board, and then I'm gonna let you go. I know it's been a long meeting here. So in looking at my notes, I wanted to talk through, um, how to review applications very briefly, because you're gonna have access to them tomorrow. It's gonna be a lot of stuff, and I, I don't want you to start trying to read every word on every page of everything that's in there. Because you get to the second, third, fourth person, you just don't have room in your mind anymore. What most people will do, not telling you, you have to do it, but this is a sort of a trick of the trade. When you open up each of these applications, I would look at their cover letter, look at their resume, read their answers to those three questions you asked them that are specific to Brainerd. And if you need to, then read their, um, letters of recommendation. Those are the, the big four. Okay? Cover letter, resume, answers to your questions, and letters of recommendation. Then I would start to put people in piles. You know, it's electronics, you don't have actual piles in front of you. But put them in yes, no, and maybe. There's gonna be some people that you're probably instantly interested in, because they're in your yes category. There's also gonna be ones you're gonna think, no, just no. Then I would revisit your maybe pile and try to put the maybe people into a yes or a no pile. And if you can't do it, that's fine. And then just put it away for a couple of days, and then go back and look at it one more time before the 30th. And then come prepared to that meeting with your own list that, because you'll have a list that said candidate A is Jane Doe, B is John Doe, C is Jim Smith. You'll have that list. So when we talk on the 30th, it'll be A, B, C, and D. But do try to differentiate based on those four big things, yes, no, and maybe. If you want to dive into transcripts, and licenses, and work history, and educational history, go ahead. It's just a lot of data for you on top of everything else that you're responsible for. So I would suggest that, but do what you want. Any questions on that when you start looking through the applications? Call me if you have questions when you do. But you're good to go? Okay?
I have a question.
And then...
Oh, we have a question, Barb.
Uh, we, we're not able to print any of this off our printers. This is all...
Correct.
So when you say your piles, you're talking about handwritten piles. Gotcha.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep, and there'll be a disclaimer when you get the information. Shelby will get it to you from Ravelus. There'll be all kinds of disclaimers that says, remember, this is private data. Do not print, do not download, don't take screenshots, don't look at them in a coffee shop. Just try to protect the data as best you can. One of the things that's different for us is you get to see all these applications. And the reason you get to see all these applications is because board members to this point in time have been very careful with private data. If we have boards that start mishandling it, and applicant names are released before they're named a finalist, then we have to start pulling back in the reins and not allowing board members to see them. So I thank you in advance for helping us continue to do this, because we do trust you with it, and...
One other question, Barb? When we're looking at these on the, uh, Ravelus, uh, do you identify candidates as candidate A, B, C, D, and E, and F? Or you, how, how are they identified?
By name. By name. You'll see their name.
Okay.
Yep, the ABC is just a later sort of almost a... And we, it's not in alphabetical order. It's not ABC by last name or ABC by first name. It's literally random. So that anyone who hears us talking about candidate A and B, when we announce them later, they can't figure out that person whose name starts with Z was candidate A, because we flipped them. There's no rhyme or reason to the ABC.
Okay, so...
You do it by name.
Okay, we do it by name now?
Yep.
Yeah, you'll see there.
Do it all by name.
Do it by name, and then, oh, then when you come in, they'll give you...
You just can't say their name.
Yeah. Right. Right. I'll, I'll send you a fact.
All right, so I think that satisfies, what, the discussion to this point satisfies action item one on the agenda, which was to consider first round interview questions, interview schedule, and interview procedures. Is that fair? Could I ask a motion to move us forward to the next part?
So must.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a, a motion from Director Hyden with a second from Director Brecken to approve the first round interview questions and other items as previously discussed. Any further discussion on this piece? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Scott.
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes. Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
DJ Donnely?
Yeah.
Randy Hyden?
Yes.
Our motion carries. Next up then is to discuss, decide, and schedule next steps necessary for the hiring process. They're pretty well laid out, but we could probably have Barb just go back over them to reinforce them for us. So it starts with tomorrow morning and goes through a week from tomorrow? Is that about right?
Until April 30th? Yes.
Yeah, those are kind of the...
So tomorrow, you'll have access. Please do set up username and password so that you can look at these. If you don't want to look at them electronically, let me know, and I'll make sure that there's one set of hard copies available to you at the district office. And then you take turns coming in. We cannot have two board members in the same room looking at these applications together. It needs to be individual. Also, let's see, you'll have access until the thirtieth at one o'clock. I'll be joining you virtually for that meeting. The day or two before, I will send you a list. You'll already have the list that says John Doe is A, Jim Doe is B, Jane Doe is C, which is after you've got your piles, mental piles, or on your notes, yes, no, maybe. Just go put A, B, and C by their names once you have that list in front of you. But I'm gonna send you a list that tells you who we're recommending. I didn't use to do this, but now I send it to you at least a day before so that you can look at this list of people and say, oh, MSBA is recommending these four people. That's my same four, or wow, I'm on a completely different page than MSBA. I want you to know that a day ahead of time so that you can go back into those applications. Or you can call me and say, why in the world are you recommending candidate D? I don't get it. I can share a little bit more information with you one-on-one because I don't violate data privacy by talking about it one-on-one with you. But if I'm in the open meeting, I'm not gonna be able to say very much. So you'll have a list of our recommendations on the twenty-ninth at the latest to compare to your own lists. And then on that night, you'll decide how many to interview. So at that point, we'll know whether you are interviewing on the second alone or if you're doing the second and the third of May. The days for interviews totally depends on how many folks you want to bring in for the first round. So that'll be decided on the thirtieth. My other question is about live streaming and recording because tonight's meeting is livestreamed and recorded. I believe also on the thirtieth.
We didn't livestream it.
It's just recorded, okay? Same, same thing for the meeting of the thirtieth. It's just recorded. Is that correct?
I think we pre- hold it on that.
Yeah.
How about the interviews? Will they be recorded? I know they're not being livestreamed. You did discuss that, right? You're not livestreaming round one or round two. Are you recording round one or round two? And there's pros and cons. The pro for recording round one is that you could put those interviews online for community members that didn't come to the live meeting to watch. They could watch those candidates. Sometimes districts choose only to put the finalists. So if you interview five and you move two forward, they only put those two up on the website. So that's a pro. Other districts choose to record them but not release them. The con then is that you've created a data point and those are subject to a data request. So the more data you create, it's more data you have to manage. And then if there's a data request for any of those, I'll make up the number five. If there's a record, a request for any of those five, someone can watch the same interview on the recording. So they go through the data processes part or data request part. So I just want to make sure that I know exactly what your expectations are, and I think your IT team would appreciate knowing, are you gonna record those? I want you to understand why you're recording them if you are. And do you want to do it for one and two, just one, just two, or neither?
Floor is open. John?
Are we, are we interviewing all potential candidates on the same day? In other words, if we have, if there's nine, that's whatever, nine, so are we gonna do nine in one day?
Well, we'll never interview nine.
Yeah.
They'll bring four, we'll, we'll. Yeah.
All right, so my question is this, will, will, if we record it and it's put on, nobody would get a, I don't know how to do this technology-wise, but would somebody get an advantage by picking up something that's recorded? Another candidate?
So, yeah, we talked about that. So the first round, assuming more than three are semifinalists.
Yeah.
That'll be spread out over two days, May second, May third.
Yep.
Those will be recorded. They would, I, I, I personally don't see why we would livestream any of the interviews. It's really to me about posting the recordings versus making people request them. And what we would do is we would wait until May fourth until both rounds of the first round of interviews are done to post any recordings. So no candidate would have an advantage over another candidate.
So let me, that's, okay, so if I'm a candidate and then I make the finals, are we gonna post, are we gonna post any candidates prior to the final interview? Because they don't have to pick up on questions or anything, but they could pick up on a lot of other things. Facial expressions or emotions or, that's my point. So if we put something on prior to final interviews, can a candidate pick stuff up from that recording? Who matters? I'm not talking about just questions. You, you, you all sound the same.
I totally get what you're saying.
Totally get what you're saying.
Um, I would say I would be fine with postponing, posting the recordings till May eighth. But also, I mean.
What do you think about this guy?
Go ahead, DJ, yep.
Why don't we just, let's just, let's just do the second interviews because then we'll probably only have two or three people. And it's less stuff for the school to have to keep track of. I think I read they have to keep the recordings for three years. And we'll just do the second round of interviews and then it's not like we're trying to hide anything.
Yep, and you mentioned that at the beginning, right, Barb? That a lot of districts do that? Because I mean, who's gonna really come do an information request or maybe one aficionado that really wants to hear those other interviews? But yeah, I, I, I think that's a good middle thing.
I like that.
Yeah, I like that, what DJ said too.
Yep.
And then since.
Yep.
And then those are the same day, so we're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
From an access standpoint, do you, the only thing I worry about is if people can't make it those nights, they have no way of being able to see the candidates at all.
Does it matter if they don't see the semifinalists? And they see the.
Well, they don't see the finalists in action. The only way you see the finalists in action is see them as part of the whole pool, right?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
That's the only fly in that ointment.
Yeah.
Well, they'll be in action again because we're gonna re-interview them with new questions.
Yeah.
People.
But we make that decision that night, and so if people wanted to reach out to us, they kind of lose that opportunity unless they're in the room.
Yeah, well, I mean, so do we. So does anybody. I mean, if it's a priority, make it a priority, I guess. It is what it is.
Well, and maybe my points aren't valid or.
I like it, you know, I, I mean, so we're talking about two different things. We have round one of interviews, right, which we're all saying we're not gonna livestream those. Obviously, that would make no sense. So they will be recorded and they will be available for those that file an information request. That's what's sort of on the table. Then for the second, second round of finalists, do we want to livestream those?
Well, if we like.
Well, I, I'm talking about the first round, we don't record.
I think we're.
Right, Barb? Is that what you said?
No, you're not required to record them ever, no.
Then I would say.
As long as your doors are open, you're needing to open the window.
You want to see them, you come sit in this room and listen to them. Just like we have to.
And, and we don't want to livestream the second round because then the.
Oh, the first candidate would see the, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't have that choice available.
Yeah.
So then that.
Well, we want to, we probably should record.
I think I'm, that's where I'm leaning. But that doesn't address Sarah's issue about access, yeah.
I mean, it's a sensitive enough situ, sensitive enough situation in terms of not accidentally giving people upper hands or information that, like I said, if you have, if you're a community member and you're engaged enough in this process that you want to observe the whole thing. The dates are out there. They're a couple of weeks away, just like we had to make time to do it. I mean, it's not ideal, but it's, we're making some lemonade with, I mean, I don't, I guess I'm okay with it. Somebody argue with me?
I'm not. I, I think people should have access to it, but I'm not assured I'm gonna die on.
But then that makes the argument for recording.
Yes, I think, I mean, last time we livestreamed.
You'd have to livestream, Sarah, because if you record them, they do a data request. I mean, they're not gonna get them for three days. We're already gonna make a choice, you know?
I'm not, I'm not worried about the data request. I'm worried about making them public for people to see that are interested in seeing the candidates and how they interviewed. Once they've interviewed. So that they can give us feedback.
Is there a, a solution to this that emerges more often than not, Barb, with other districts?
Yes, this was not an issue before the pandemic because interviews were not recorded and were not livestreamed for the most part. Pandemic changed everything because everyone started, they were required to go to electronic meetings by electronic means. And so everyone started recording and livestreaming everything to meet the requirements of the open meeting law. Now that we've normalized back to pre-pandemic where people can come in and watch you do your work, there's this expectation that you're supposed to be livestreaming and recording when in fact it's not required by law. We are seeing a trend of more boards going back to saying, if you want to see the interviews, please come and watch them. But the hassle of creating the data point with a recording has swayed some boards away from even recording them, and the vast majority are no longer livestreaming unless they maybe livestream the second round where it's not, it's probably not gonna happen where the second candidate watches the first one that is just too close together. So the trend is back toward, hey, if you want to come watch it, the doors are open, please watch us do the business. But the reasons to not livestream or reasons not to record have started to become more common. Doesn't mean you have to do that. Then the other thing I was gonna ask you about is what about your deliberations? The interviews are one thing. What about the board deliberations when you're talking about these candidates in deciding who to bring back or deciding who to hire? Do you want to livestream or record those? And it's the same reasons to or not to. Your deliberations, one of the things I always want to caution you about is if you livestream your deliberations, be aware that the candidates are watching you. And so if you do say things during deliberations that are negative about a candidacy, sometimes they will not accept an offer. Not always, but you do need to be careful if you livestream because they're probably watching to see what you're deciding. Otherwise, recording, same thing. You create a data point that people could make a request for to watch the deliberations as well. So those are different from interviews, but it's always, for the most part, one or the other. The interviews and deliberations go together. We livestream all of it, or we record all of it, or we don't livestream or record all of it. But if you want to, you could split them up. Long answer.
So if we recorded it and made them available, say, like on the fourth, we've created it at a point, but we've also made them public at that point because we would release the recording. So it's, our exposure is.
No, then you're just back to John's concern that people study them.
Yeah.
I mean, for my part, I'm just gonna, I, it, to me, I would kick it old school. I would, we livestreamed the deliberation last time and I really, really, really wish we hadn't. But again, I'm open to anybody else's ideas, but I mean, it's just like our retreats. It's just like tonight. I mean, the door is open. You can come in and watch. It's an open meeting. You can come in and watch it. And I think to Barb's point, we, we accidentally set this expectation that everything's available to everybody all the time.
And, and we have, and so to not put it out there.
Yep, I understand, but it's a unique circumstance with weird data that's got timing elements to it unlike most of the other stuff that we talk about, right? So anyway, I'm.
Can, can we livestream part of it and not?
Yeah, we can chop it up however you want. So like if you wanted to not livestream the interviews but livestream the deliberations, you could do that. You could do the opposite.
True.
We don't want to do that.
I was, I was talking about what we could do, not what we should do, but now he's saying no.
I like, I'm, I'm a Kevin. I don't think we should.
Wait, Ryan has some thoughts on what we can stream, what we can't.
You can, you can stream anything, but you can't start and stop a stream. Once you set it up inside of YouTube, it's like you start it and you stop it. You can't restart it again. I have to create a new one. So we'd have to have like a window in between where I can create a new one.
Yeah, which is doable.
Yes.
The same thing, you just shut it off if we decided to stream the interviews but not the deliberations.
Yes.
And then if, and, and if the opposite is true, you just start at the deliberations. It wouldn't be difficult.
Yep.
If we did both, you'd need to break in between to stop one.
Pause there, yeah.
You could break them into two pieces, or do we care at that point if it's all just one?
What do we think the expectation of the community is gonna be?
I think they're gonna expect to see it.
That's, all of a sudden, we say, ah, no recording, no livestream for this, but yeah, we'll, we'll record and livestream board meetings. But damn it, when it comes to the superintendent, eh, we're not gonna do that. I, I, that's the only thing that concerns me.
Yeah.
Is the pushback from that.
All right, so can we take it in chunks? Let's talk about round one of interviews. How concerned are we about that, that, that people don't have real-time access to that? We definitely don't want to livestream those.
I agree.
I agree.
No.
Yeah.
So then the.
I say we don't record them. I'm a vote for no recording on round one. That's just vote, not vote, vote for real, but that's just.
Yeah, straw poll.
Kevin, you said you'd go old.
Yeah, so who, who, who's, 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 who's against recording round one interviews?
Who's it?
So DJ?
Oh, first round stuff, I could care less. I mean, eh.
I mean, I'm not like violently opposed to it, but I think it's unnecessary, is my point.
I think, yeah.
Because we create that data point. And then, Sarah, to your point, we've created a data point and we've been transparent, but we've been transparent with data that by the time they can get it is useless to them anyway because we've already moved on from those people.
But they won't get to see the finalist interviews, so at least they will have.
Well, we haven't talked about the finalist interviews.
No.
I'm just talking about that round.
Right.
And maybe there is a dependency there, but I'm saying what's, what's the benefit of a community member? Because they're spread out over two days. We can't livestream them. If we record them and post them the next day, then like John said, candidates can study the thing and, and look at how the board reacts to what other people say. You know, there's, there's different things.
And the public can come to the interviews.
And the.
Public can show up.
It has to be, yeah, okay.
I, I just don't want to create that expectation when we haven't done that in the past. People expect to have access to it because they have access to all of our board meetings. And, you know, you've got parents that have kids' stuff and people that work. I don't, I don't pretend to be above that people have lives just because we've said we're committed to this and they want to commit to it in some way. I don't think we should put up barriers.
That expectation, again, yeah, it kind of bothers me. Maybe we should be open and transparent. I don't.
All right, so we got two people that want full transparency. And I hate using that word because it sounds like we're not trying to be transparent when the door is wide open and people can come in here anytime they want.
I'm in favor of all meetings in this regard to be livestreamed and recorded.
John, where are you at?
You can't livestream around here. You can't let the people on the second day watch the interviews from the first day because they're all gonna get the same questions.
Yeah.
You absolutely can't livestream the first round.
I'm not in favor of livestreaming the first round, yeah.
No, I'm not either.
No.
Okay, so we have a plurality against livestreaming round one. So we're making progress, right? So write that one down, Barb. Now, do we record round one?
And play it later or play?
Well, we can post it to the district website after the superintendent's selection process is over.
I'm okay with that.
Because we can still get feedback from the community even after we narrowed it down. Some of their feedback could be very helpful to us.
Well, that's, now you're talking about though posting it between the two rounds of interviews.
Oh, right.
Right, yeah.
So what John had a concern, oh, John, you talk about your concern. I don't have to talk for you.
Yeah.
I, I just, I did, well, I said it before. I think that people can pick up on things so easily and use it um, to their, to their advantage. I mean, you'd say it'd be difficult to do, all you got, you, you have one of these little things in a room that you're waiting to, to, you know, whatever?
Well, it's not about that, it'd be about.
If you're recording it and putting it on the website after. But I know that doesn't.
After we already hired it.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly, DJ.
But then at least we eliminate the data point issue where we're creating data requests that are on, you know, like it would, it would avoid, we'd avoid that pitfall. But it doesn't address Sarah's issue.
Yeah, and I, I think we're working with professionals and it doesn't create an unfair advantage for any of them. I'm fine having it out in the public. If they want to review every second of it and see how we respond, I think that's their prerogative and might be helpful for them.
Okay, well, we know where Randy's at, and you, so recording round one and posting it before the finalist interviews, you're okay with that. John's voiced a concern. DJ, where are you at?
Here's my, here's, here's what I think, is I think that it's, I can go either way. I'll do whatever you guys want on this deal. But the deal is, is I think it's kind of weird. So we're not gonna take these candidates, but then we're gonna go post their job interviews. Like what difference does it make? We've already made our decision. So if you wanted to be there to watch the deal, but now we got these poor people that didn't get picked, so that doesn't feel real great. And then we're gonna go stick a video of them out there so everybody can see why they didn't get picked, you know? It's, eh, I don't, I don't understand the purpose of it.
Well, and that's the other thing it does is it puts tape out there on the candidate that then people from other districts go watch and stuff like that, right?
Exactly, so I mean, you kind of, if someone had a bad day, a bad interview, just, you know, I mean, I don't care. LeBron James has a bad, Tiger Woods has a bad day. So now that's out there for years. We have to keep that information for three years from what I read in one of the policies that Barb sent out. I just think that first round, I think we can skip it, and the second round, if you got to livestream it and record it, I think that's just fine. I don't think we should livestream or record our deliberations because nothing good's gonna come out of that. Whoever we hire, someone's not gonna, probably been right on board right off the bat. And so all you're gonna do is kind of make the ability for someone to have a little chip on their shoulder that you didn't want me in the first place, or, you know, I'm saying, it's like, I don't see what the benefit is to the public. It's over. We already hired them for our deliberations. That's just between us. I mean, you can be there in public, I take it, Barb, and watch that?
Yeah, they have to be open.
Deliberations, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so. I mean, Kevin, you were the one, the last time you wished it was not out there. I'm all about public comment, all the different things. I, I, the whole time I've been on here, I've always been, I think, I've, I've meant to be promoting that this should all be open stuff, but now we're starting talking about other people's lives, not just ours. And I don't know what the benefit is to take people that we're not actually gonna interview a second time and put their interview online. That's all.
Barb, go ahead. Sorry, Michelle, I'll come back to you.
That's a very valid point, and there are districts that choose, let's say you interview six and you move three forward. They only put those three online the next day, and they actually only lead them up for a week and take them down right before round two, so they don't live in infamy forever.
That's what we did with the time, yeah, they chopped out the people we didn't move forward. That's right, you can edit it out.
Right. Similarly, after round two, if you record all three, let's just say there's three people in round two. If you record all three, I don't know why you'd put all three up after you've made a decision because if you do that, you're gonna be second-guessed all the way till sundown. Because of those three, one of them interviewed far better. And yet you, as the board, have seen so much more information and done reference check calls that you hire someone who didn't interview that well in round two. So some districts will say, we'll put up the lone finalist after their interview because that's the one we're moving forward with. And then that also doesn't stay up forever. Maybe it only stays up for a, a week or two. Lots of considerations. I know candidates deeply appreciate it when you don't put them in the spotlight forever, especially if they didn't interview well because it is the careers you're talking about of some people that have put themselves out there publicly. when you don't put them in the spotlight forever, especially if they didn't interview well. Cause it is the careers you're talking about of some people that have put themselves out there publicly. So they appreciate not being out there forever, for those exclusive reasons.
From a, from a data request perspective, because we record it all and then we edit out the ones we didn't select because of the way Ryan has to do it, that's all still a data point though. Like any, anybody could still request the paper, right?
Yeah, absolutely correct, yes.
I don't know what you would do with that, but, okay, Michelle, you had a, a question.
I think I was just gonna say that I, that, that if we were to choose not to record slash livestream, it's not that we don't wanna be transparent, is that we, it's that we wanna be respectful of the process of our interviewing, which is so different than a general board meeting. It's kind of where I'm coming down. This is a specific circumstance. And like DJ said, other people's lives are, um, a part of this process.
But I wanna come back to you.
Okay.
Because just, right, I mean, I think what you're after, I'm gonna put words in your mouth and you take them out if, if they don't fit. Okay? You would like these to be available because we're looking for a broader audience of people to review these interviews because we've sort of limited what we're doing with, what we did with the option one on the stakeholder survey to open the door for more people to review these people and provide feedback to us in between the interviews.
I, yes, that is exactly what I'm saying. Because I think the last time we did that, you know, your inbox was full, my inbox was full. It was valuable for people to be able to have access and feel like they weighed in.
So I think Barb solved it for us.
Yeah.
I think she solved it by us recording and not livestreaming round one. Then editing round one down to just the, the candidates that are advanced to the finalists. And then posting those interviews.
I love that. I can do that. Yep.
Then we have to talk about round two.
So we're, we're, we're talking about the April 30th meeting?
No, we're talking about May 2nd, May 3rd. There'll be two days where we interview half the candidates one day, half the candidates the next day. Those will all be recorded. They will not be livestreamed. They're open meetings. Anybody can come attend them. But at the end, when we get done, Ryan will go back and once we identify who the two, three finalists are that are going forward, he will, he will post those as individual or however we need to do it to get them out there so people can go review the interviews that we did with the people that are gonna be interviewed again. With me?
How about the?
And then if, if, if those, if, to John's concern, if the, if, if they wanna take time out of their schedule to review how, you know, how DJ shifts his position in his chair based on a question.
Right.
I mean, let them have at it. They all have access to the same information at least.
Yeah.
So it's a level playing field. They can all study the same game film. It's not like Bill Belichick with a camcorder.
Oh, maybe.
I'm okay with that.
But I would prefer that the deliberations were not?
Okay, now we're on round one. Now we're on to round two.
Okay.
All right, we're good on round, DJ, we good?
We deliberate after?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with that. Like I said, I can take it.
Deliberations in round, uh, round, when we, on round one. Good point, Michelle, yeah.
So I would like that not to be recorded.
I agree.
Brian shuts it off at the end of the interviews.
Right. That's just the three that get published.
Yep, that we're moving on.
Because we're gonna do theoretically, so let's just say six interviews over two days, and then we don't deliberate till we're done with all five or six or whatever, right? And we don't wanna record or livestream those deliberations.
Right, Brian was gonna say something.
I just wanna clarify. No, that's fine. You guys, so we're gonna record on round one, which is May 2nd and 3rd or whatever. However many candidates there are, you're gonna get it down to however many there are. We'll edit out the ones that didn't make it. Just post the ones that made it. Okay, and then at the end of the interview, we'll stop it for the deliberation.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, I can do a PowerPoint too if we need to.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, everybody on board with that? DJ, we good?
Yep.
We can't see your face because the way the screen's lined up here.
You good with that, DJ? Maybe you got it.
Silence is consent. Okay.
I'm good with it.
Okay, now let's move on. Randy, you have a question?
I've never had Barb. Just, yeah, I just, what, what, what are we doing for the April 30th meeting? Is that being livestreamed and recorded?
Just recorded.
Just recorded, no livestream?
Right.
Okay.
Like what we're doing today.
Okay, that's cool.
Okay, now we're on to May 8th.
May 8th.
Where we bring in finalists. They come in, there'll be two or three probably. And they come in one after the other. So the question is, do you wanna livestream those interviews? Or Sarah, is it good enough that they got to see them in round one? I think that's how we did it last time.
I can't remember.
Because we didn't want candidate three, well, they were spread out over different days.
Oh, that's right.
So there were three. There was Carsten, there was Eric, and there was Heidi. And then the one came one day, the one came the next day, and then one came the next day. So we didn't livestream for obvious reasons there, because the other people would have had, you know, like whoever the third one was, I don't, I don't remember who it was, doesn't matter, had two days, would have had two days to study the other interviews. So the question is, Barb, walk us through the timeline real quick for what that day would look like. Like what, what, what's the first time the board would sit down with candidate A?
On May 8th?
Yes.
Okay, well, you'll know their name, because you'll know their names after the 30th. You're using names, not letters anymore.
Yep, but I'm just?
Noon.
Noon, then the next one's at 2?
Uh, wondering if you were at noon. If you go an hour, we'd have noon, 1:15, 2:30, at, if you had three, at 3:30, you'd be done. So noon to 3:30, there'd be three interviews in that window.
Okay.
And then you start deliberations around 4 o'clock, quarter to 4 o'clock.
So the concern becomes, do we worry about the 2:30 person being able to watch a livestream of the 12 o'clock person?
Yep.
I do.
Right.
Yeah. So that's the argument against livestreaming those. Same thing we did last time. It was easier last time because it was spread out over different days. So are we on consensus? We are not going to livestream round two?
Yep, I'm, yes.
That's fine.
Okay. Now we're down to what we record and what we post. I have no problems with, um, recording those interviews and posting those interviews the next day. Um, and it's just a Barb question. Same thing. Um, let's say we're three finalists, only one gets hired, then we only post that, that, that individual's interview and not the two other finalists, right?
That's what I'd recommend.
Okay.
Because if you had, I mean, some of the three, two of them might interview better than the one that you hire.
Same methodology, round one. Same concept. So Ryan, same, same exact concept, and then it's just, do we want to livestream the round two deliberations or not?
Are we recording?
Excuse me, do we wanna do that before contract settled? Yeah.
What, yeah, what happens if, what happens if our, our finalist doesn't accept?
Well, I'm, that's why, I'm, I'm a big believer in, yeah. Well, you, we delay the posting. There's no statutory requirement that we post that recording 24 hours later.
But the world's gonna know. I mean, it's gonna be in the newspaper the next day, so.
Oh, it'll be on Facebook that night.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, again, I'm in favor of, of?
I mean, are we gonna allow, dumb question, are we gonna allow cell phones in here where people could actually record what's going on?
You can't restrict that.
Why not?
Public meetings.
Right, we don't have a policy around it. We can't just make up an ad hoc policy. This isn't a Dave Chappelle concert.
Okay, I'll make a decision. Let's get this done with.
All right. Uh, my, my, my suggestion would be to follow Barb's recommendation, which is, I understand it. Barb, you walk us through it for round two.
I agree.
So you would record round two. If you had three people in round two, you record all three but not livestream. And then the next day, you would post the one video, the one interview of who you are going to be negotiating with. And by then, there's a press release that has gone out. People know who you're negotiating with. On the very rare chance that it falls through, you just take their video down.
But that's the other reason we don't record or livestream the deliberations, because stuff will get said in the deliberations that we would prefer those other two candidates don't hear.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Does everybody sound pretty much on board with that?
It's good.
I'm on board.
I'll see if I can get this, so I can frame a motion that somebody needs to make.
Well, you make sure you do your PowerPoint for Ryan too.
So I would entertain a motion for the following. That for round one of the semifinalists, that we record the interviews, but not the deliberations. And that we edit out the candidates that are not advanced after, after round two and only post the interviews for the finalists that were moved forward. And then for round two, that we record, same as we did in round one. When we advance the candidate, whoever we offer the job to, that's the only interview that gets posted from being recorded. And in neither case do we record our deliberations or livestream them.
So moved.
Motion. Second.
All right, so I have a, a, a motion from Director Ward for everything I just said. Seconded by Director Donderlinger. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call vote, please Kelly.
John Ward.
Yes.
Kevin Boils.
Yes.
Michelle Ruckin.
Yes.
DJ Donderlinger.
Yes.
Andy Heidman.
Yes.
Sarah Spear.
Yes.
Motion carries. And honestly, this is why I actually enjoy these meetings. I love how we get where we get to.
I do too.
It's like an emotional jigsaw puzzle. It's fun. All right, I would entertain a motion to appear in this meeting.
Some moves.
All right, we have a, a, a motion from Director Spear with a second from Director Heidman to adjourn. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please Kelly.
Kevin Boils.
Yes.
Michelle Ruckin.
Yes.
DJ Donderlinger.
Yes.
Sarah Spear.
Yes.
John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries, we adjourn. Barb?
Thank you.
Hazard case somehow through MSBA.